Rose, are we up?
Yep.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we're ready to go.
Alrighty, I hereby call the City Council of City of Buellton for the council meeting May 28, 6:00 PM to order if I can get our city manager who has a flag behind him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would mute during this, that'd be great.
Stan, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been unmuted.
Yes, you have.
Call the doctor.
Yes, she's here. Okay. Okay. Polly, are you muted?
Okay, yeah, I was muted. Linda, if I can get you to give roll call, please.
Sure, Councilmember Andrisik.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mercado.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here, thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
We have no reordering of the agenda this evening.
Wonderful. Then we move on to our public comments. This is, uh, comments that can go up to three minutes. You can talk about any topic you want. Because we're on Zoom, you need to email our city clerk in advance of the meeting or email her really quickly right now. Uh, and I know we have one public speaker, and that would be Pam Nico. Why don't you go ahead, Pam?
Pam, you're muted.
Volume.
Yeah, you're muted.
She's never been muted.
Can you, can you, oh.
Okay, if you can unmute your phone.
Is everyone wearing their mask?
No, but I'm gonna move out of the screen for a minute. My phone's on fumes. Hang on. I'm waiting for Pam, though.
She's, she's trying to speak here, but her audio's not coming through.
Ha! Am I unmuted?
There you go, there you go, yeah.
It was like, are you kidding? I've been on all this time and now I can't.
You gotta tell the joke again.
Polly there?
I'm here.
Yes.
I am here.
So, okay, so I really just wanted to get on tonight and just give you a brief rundown of what we're doing and basically thank the City of Buellton for all the help and support they've given us through these, um, three months of getting, of just taking care of the community. And, um, I just wanted to tell you that without that emergency startup fund, we couldn't have done any of this. And I also just want to make it public of thanking the City of Buellton that when they gave emergency funds, they never put boundaries on us. They just said, "Feed this valley," and, and that's what we did. So there was never any city boundaries. We just, you just gave and, and just included the entire valley, which I think is a really, um, that needs to be noted. Um, so in saying that, I just want to give you some updates of what we're doing. Uh, we've been kind of like this body of the octopus for programs that are going on in the valley. Uh, we had our own farmer's market every day at the Buellton Senior Center. And I just want to tell you like what we've done there for your, for the city. So from March 9th, which was when we're, when we're calling COVID-19 crisis in Buellton, um, we've given out eighty-six thousand pounds, eighty-six, two-hundred-and-ninety-two pounds out of that farmer's market. I think that's pretty amazing for the size of our city and the size of, of our, of our center. Um, we've been a, we've been, um, we've been in joint partnership with St. Mark's, giving out the soup distribution and making the soups and helping with that. Majority of those deliveries have been in Buellton, um, for all of the seniors there. And since we started that in March 28th, we've given out twenty-five thousand, forty-seven quarts of soup to all the seniors every Tuesday and, and every Saturday so that they had hot meals those days in the evening. I think that's pretty crazy to have been able to pull that off with you guys. The Berry Man, um, is delivering fifty, they're donating fifty boxes of produce in front of the Senior Center every single day. They will be doing that until, I believe, uh, I believe, Les said, till June 14th. Um, Mark Brown over at, uh, the golf course, um, at our city golf course, he has been donating ten percent of everybody that rents a cart or rents a, um, a pull cart or, um, or driving carts. Sorry, I know there's right names for that. I can't think of them right now. Um, so yesterday, he brought me over a check for five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, which was pretty amazing that, you know, first of all, that he thought of it, um, as a way, as a way to help. So I, um, I'm pretty excited about that. We're, um, we're in partnership with the River of Giving, uh, the food distribution out at, um, uh, at the Vets Hall, uh, every Thursday, which has just been kind of overwhelming. But I think the most important part is that, um, for seniors, for Meals on Wheels in Buellton and in Los Alamos, right now, we're doing twelve-hundred-and-fifty meals, Meals on Wheels a week. I don't even know how, honestly, but they keep going out and they keep being great and they keep being delivered. Um, but I mean, for the size of our city, I just kind of wanted that on record because that is, that is incredible. That's like Santa Barbara numbers, um, that, that's going on here in the valley. And then every Monday, we're giving out, delivering to their door, two-hundred-and-fifty produce bags to seniors in the valley and mostly in Buellton. So I just want to thank you and thanks to the city that you guys have been behind us one-hundred percent. Um, if you want to see what we're doing on Mondays with all this food, we have the cigar coming out Monday, the Berry Man. I invite you to come over there and, um, at about ten o'clock in the morning, Scott and Mayor Sierra were over there last Monday. And I think until you actually visually see it, you can't believe what we're doing here in Buellton. And I'm just so proud to be a part of this city and so proud to be, um, have you guys as our council and, and, and running our city and helping us out. And I just needed to tell you that.
Thank you.
Pam, you are truly amazing and we are blessed that you are a huge part of our community. I, you'd be doing this wherever, you, you would be doing this wherever you are. And we're just glad you're here in Buellton. So.
Well, thank you. I'd have to take my staff with me. I don't think I could do it with them. I'd have to relocate everybody.
Oh, it's, it, it truly was amazing to watch it. All your volunteers and, and how quickly everybody moves and how organized it is. And, uh, it was very, very impressive, very, very impressive. So.
Thank you for all your support and your help.
Thank you very, very much.
Hi Pam, you're quite welcome.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay. Well, do we have any other public comments today?
No, ma'am, we don't.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Pam. We're gonna move on to the consent calendar. We've got a busy, busy night tonight. Uh, we've got five items. We have the minutes of May 21, 2020 special city council meeting. We have the minutes of May 14, 2020, regular city council meeting. We have the list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2019, '20. The monthly treasurer's report, April 30th, 2020. And agenda item five on the consent calendar, there are three parts to it. These are resolutions pertaining to general municipal election to be held November 3rd, 2020. Resolution number 20-13, a resolution of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law cities. Then we have resolution number 20-14, a resolution of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, with the general election pursuant to section 10403 of the Elections Code. And the last is resolution number 20-15, a resolution of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements, material submitted to the electorate, and the cost thereof submitted to the voters at an election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Gentlemen, any questions or do I have any motions?
I move for approval of items one through five.
Was that Councilman Andrisik?
Yeah, Councilman Andrisik made the motion. Who made the second?
Was that Councilman Sanchez?
I'll second that since I'm, yeah. King, king, king.
All right. Councilmember King seconded. Okay, Linda?
Councilmember Andrisik.
Yes, Dave King.
Aye.
Councilmember King. Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any presentations tonight?
We have no presentations this evening.
Okay. Any public hearings?
No public hearings.
Okay, then we go to council member comments slash items. I'm going to start with Councilman Andrisik. Any comments or items to discuss?
Well, the, the comments I were going to make was regarding the trimming, getting, getting better control on our grass, uh, mowing because we were up over two feet. It was almost three. But, uh, about a week ago, ten days ago, Caltrans trimmed all of the grass at, um, at the intersection of one, of 246 and 101. Then they, we had the large field over behind where the townhouses are. That was getting up around three feet tall. And now it has been cut. So I thank the people that did that. With all of the fires we've had in the county, those places would have probably created some havoc for the, all those residents. So, um, I, I appreciate that they, that it got done, but I was thinking we need to probably put a closer watch on the height of the weeds during the summer season.
Alrighty.
I think that's all of my comment.
Okay.
Just as a comment, if I might, Mayor, um, in response to that, our code enforcement officer, Ben Hernandez, is keeping an eye on that, particularly the, the.
Good.
Tell site there next to the, um, uh, next to the townhomes. Uh, we, we had advised the property owner some time back that the weeds were beginning to grow and they really took off and, and we needed to impress upon them the need to jump on that a little more quickly. Uh, Caltrans did respond very quickly to that and we will be keeping an eye on that in the future.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, any, any comments slash items from you?
We just follow up on the weeds that, um, the weeds are still in front of Taco Bell.
Yes.
The other thing, I had, I had a complaint from somebody that the, uh, North Island was turning brown. And, uh, I spoke to engineers, just asked them what they had planned on it. And, uh, there was a water truck right there, but I don't know if they can have the water truck make a loop. If it's, it would be part of the, I would expect, would be part of the contract to maintain the, the, uh, landscape, if that's what they affected with the contract, or with the project. So hopefully it'll get resolved that we can at least water that island. Even if we took a lap with a water truck, we'd have a, a green island for the next six months. Would be nice. But that'll be followed up, I believe.
And staff is looking into a solution on that one as well. We'll be able to report back to you at the next meeting what that will be.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember King, comments, items?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Mayor Mercado?
Uh, the only comment, I just wanted to make sure that we do have it on record that, uh, to make sure that we do congratulate, uh, uh, the Senior Center and Pam and all her staff. Uh, I know my wife goes on Saturdays to help and, and it's a big. the Senior Center and Pam and all her staff. I know my wife goes on Saturdays to help and, and it's a big chore and the numbers are keep getting bigger, but she does an outstanding job and, and with some health issues that she has, she's just been a rock there. So we need to commend her.
Absolutely. I had, I had kind of a footnote to that for my comment. I was talking with Joan Hartman, Supervisor Hartman, earlier this week. And the Senior Center now has a thirty-five year lease contract with the county. So. That's just like solving Senior Center, but they want to plow that one down anyway. So ours will be around for a while. Okay. So if there are no other.
What, just question, was it, is it a signed contract or, because I know they've been, you know, for the last couple of months, they've been going back and forth with. Is it a signed contract?
Pam has not had time to sign it. The county has it written up. It needs a signature. And Joan said her staff was reaching out to see if anybody on the board had the authority to sign for Pam since she has been so busy. But it is there. I had talked to Joan and told her I was really disappointed that they hadn't done anything and she was very surprised. She thought it had been signed and researched it. And it is, has been approved by the county. It just needs one final signature. So.
Cool.
Done deal.
That's great. Great.
Yeah, that, that'll be nice. Okay, do we have any written communications tonight?
No ma'am.
Okay, committee reports. Councilman Andrek, any committee report?
The, our, our most recent one was the groundwater conservation district, the, the, that, that met on the eighteenth of May, Monday, the eighteenth, we met in council chambers. And it was a, I believe it was a Zoom meeting, or on, it was on speakerphone. It wasn't, they were not in attendance, but it, that, and our next one will be a couple of months down the road for that. But they, Bill Bulow just gave, gave an update and we've got, I think the next meeting may, June, July, August. I believe it's going to be August. Rose may have a date. I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
And CC, and CCWA did not meet. Today was the fourth Thursday, but the meetings had been both, the last two have been foregone because of the pandemic issues and people not having quarrels and those sort of things.
Got it. Thank you. Councilman Sanchez, any meetings? Any committees?
Oh yeah, we do plan on having our arts and culture committee meeting in person. We're going to all meet at the rec center so we can socially distance and I'm looking for.
Wonderful. Councilman King, any committee report?
No, but I think we're going to have to change the economic development committee to the economic recovery committee.
Thank you. That's the agenda item number ten, but thank you. Vice Mayor Mercado, any committee report?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. SB CAG and APCD did meet, but we are, we just finalized budgets for next year and employee contracts. So that was it. Okay, moving on to business items. Business item agenda number six is the annual report for January first, two thousand and nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, from Visit Santiness Valley or the Visit SYV. Chanel, you've got this one.
Madam Mayor and city council members, so in your staff report, you have the two thousand and nineteen Visit Santiness Valley report. And we have Shelby Sim, who will be giving you a presentation on their accomplishment.
Wonderful.
I'll hand this over to Shelby.
I will pass it to Shelby and then he can answer any questions after that. Shelby, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me, Mayor Sierra. It's city council. It's, it's great to see everybody. So let's go on a little time trip back a year, back when everything was awesome, to twenty nineteen. If you remember, let's even go back just for a moment to twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen was a recovery at the end of the year and we even had some fires. But the mudslides and everything we had going on that stopped the folks from coming up here. Twenty nineteen was amazing. We recovered. We received over four percent more in funding. We, we took in over a hundred and fifty thousand more than we expected in twenty nineteen. It was an incredible building year and we were set up, ready to go for twenty twenty. And then that happened. So I've got, I'm going to share my screen and just share some fun visuals from the report that hopefully you've all had a chance to review. So I'm just going to do some fun stuff. Let me know. Do you see that on your screen?
Yes.
Yes. Terrific. So we do, we have an education program where we, a few times a year, we will hold trainings for front desk clerks, for tour operators, anybody that's speaking to visitors to, to teach them a little customer service and a little bit about each of our communities so that they can speak intelligently and hopefully have people stay longer. At our annual meeting, we always award the spirit of the valley, somebody who represents the valley as an ambassador and is a good example of what the valley should be. In this last year, we rep, we presented three. There, there were three, there were several nominees and we presented one to Marcy Payne of the Alisal Guest Ranch Resort, Giorgio Currie of Almiranto Catering, and Crystal DeLonge of Route two forty-six at the time. So very proud of that and, and that program. And that program, we're actually developing the new, a new, new program in the coming year, probably twenty twenty-one now. A little bit about our campaign, our twenty or nineteen campaign. It was the world of, a couple of examples, the world of tastes, the world of experiences, the world of smiles, the world of sunshine. As the council knows, we are made, we're primarily a hotel association made up of thirty-three lodging properties in the towns of Solvain, Buellton, Ballard, Los Olivos and Los Alamos. We don't receive any funding from any of the cities or the county. It's all just for a voluntary fee that the hoteliers decided to put on the visitor that comes into town. We like to say it's a small fee that the visitor pays into the fund that brought them here in the first place. Public relations, a really great year in twenty nineteen. We focused our outreach on major regional and national media outlets. Our drive markets, always Los Angeles, San Diego, San Francisco in the last year. And we really developed and expanded out into direct flight markets in Dallas and Denver, Phoenix and Portland and Seattle. We actually did pop-up trade shows in Dallas and Denver last year. And this year, Denver, we were, we're going to go to Dallas in August of this year. Overall, the total value of public relations was over five million dollars. The circulation, how many printed pieces was over forty-three million. And then the unique visitors that saw all of our stuff was well over a billion folks. And the PR add equivalency was up two hundred and twenty-four percent over twenty eighteen. As you know, we do a guide. We do ninety-five thousand copies of a guide that represents each of our communities and the valley overall. It goes to several, it's direct mail to several zip codes in Southern California. And then it's in all of the visitor centers in the tri-counties and then of course, all the hotel rooms and, and visitor center here, visitor centers here. Last year was our first year for restaurant weeks. This is our, this year was our tenth year. But last year, we expanded it out to two weeks, very successful. We had over forty-three participants, restaurants, wineries and hotel packages. It was originally conceived to bring visitors here on a slow time in January, but it's really become a, a local thing. And it gives folks who would, may not have an opportunity to go to our very nice restaurants, an opportunity for those two weeks to get out and try what we have and learn themselves so that they can tell visitors about what we have to offer. Last year was our premiere of Taste of the Santiness Valley, a four-day, five-town event. We were in Los Alamos on Thursday. We are in Santiness on, or, yep, Santiness on Friday, Los Olivos and Solvain on Saturday, and then Buellton on Sunday. We had the Sideways Festival in Riverview Park on Sunday. I think we had well over two hundred folks attend that, thirteen hundred folks over the entire festival, five days. And then it closed out with a dinner at Figaro Brewing at the, in Buellton there at the end of Industrial Way. Big picture takeaways, organic traffic up, direct traffic up significantly, mobile referral traffic seventy-four percent. Sessions, people are staying longer, looking longer, thinking about longer. And all of our major markets outside of Santa Barbara County were way up. Phoenix is looking amazing. And again, the PR equivalency up two hundred and twenty-four percent over twenty eighteen. We had the opportunity to present at Visit California in, in their Sacramento offices. Danielle and I, along with Sonia of Costa de Mitz and her husband Greg Brewer of Brewer Clifton, we all spent an hour and a half with their seventy employees and twenty visiting dignitaries from around the country. And we had an hour and a half to present and separate really to teach them about the Santiness Valley and that we aren't the coastal town of Santa Barbara and that this is where the wine is. And this is where they should be sending folks and inviting folks to come to the Santiness Valley. We have a grant and special projects program where we help with marketing dollars to anybody that puts on events like Wine and Chili Fest and the Brew Fest and other things that, that happen around the valley. A year or so ago, we, we donate, special projects wise, we donated some money to the Santiness Valley Botanic Garden that's in Riverview Park. So last year overall, we provided or awarded over sixty-eight thousand dollars to that. And that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Again, hopefully you've seen the report. You saw our, the twenty twenty budget. You just saw recently revised twenty twenty budget because of what everything that's happening. We're actually meeting again next week to revise it even more down. We, we took off two hundred thousand dollars of what we expected from the beginning of the year and we're even expecting less. So we're going to cut that, that budget even more. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you very much for leading us operating your city. And yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much Shelby. Councilman Andrek, any questions for Shelby?
Quite comprehensive. Thank you Shelby.
Councilman Sanchez?
No question.
Councilman King?
No ma'am.
Vice Mayor Mercado?
No questions, but just thank you for the information and for your job well done. Thank you.
I had two for you. I'm, I'm just really curious. I was reading your, well, maybe three. Your ongoing, your recovery strategy. I bumped into you a couple of weeks ago in Santa Maria and you said you were working hard on the recovery strategy, that you were already moving forward. Could you give us, I, I know it's probably very, very detailed, but just a brief, how, how does the Visit Santiness plan on, on just jumping back into this, limited funds now? And what's, what's the game plan?
Cheers. I really appreciate the question, Madam Mayor. We, we, of course, our, our current messaging is still, please don't come. It's about, look how pretty we are and man, remember how cool this is and can't wait to have you back. But we are still, the hotels are still not open for leisure travel. So at this time, it's still just essential workers and so as far as that goes. But as we chatted about in Santa Maria, we have three campaigns that we're preparing as we speak that will hit the market at the same time, simultaneously, all hitting different markets, all digital that will, again, as soon as we go to phase three and laser travel is good to go, we, we will hit with those three different campaigns. We know that people are not going to get into a tube and fly through the air. It will be about driving. And so we know that the average drive to escape is going to be about five hundred miles. So we're just amazingly set up with our wide open spaces, rural atmosphere, a lot of elbow room. So that's what we'll be hitting. We'll be hitting our drive markets hard with those three campaigns. And that, that's, that's immediately what we're going to, what we're going to do. As we know, folks are already coming. We had a pretty good Memorial Day here in, in the Santiness Valley. And so if you, and you, wineries now can be open. And so it's, we've started the slow roll. And so it's, it's kind of encouraging to know that people are coming regardless. And so we're, we're really excited about having them back and we feel that the Santiness Valley is perfectly placed next to the incredible market of Los Angeles to, to get folks back up here. Very excited.
Thank you. Okay, one of, I, just, just real quick, you said that your TBIT is from thirty-three hotels. How many of the thirty-three are in Buellton? I'm just curious. Any idea?
Good question. I can count. My, my guess, off the top of my head would be five. So five, five or six, yeah. So we've got, I could probably do it on my end. Here, we've got the, the King Frederick. Okay, we're good. Okay.
Fine. Okay, last one is just kind of off the wall. I hope the guys just are patient with me. I was reading that you contracted with Oniricom for an actionable intelligence report that says what each community, what's bringing people in. Have you gotten results from this company yet? I'm just curious what they're saying about Buellton.
Yeah, so we'll forward you that report. We did forward it to you. It came out January of last year. I'll, I'll, I'll resend it out. It was, they do active listening where they data mine all of the internet, what everybody is saying. And it was really fascinating. We, we learned that, you know, our market, the folks who come and spend money are baby boomers and millennials. And, and so, and then we also learned about aspirational markets, you know, diversity, Generation X and that kind of thing, the things we need to work on to, to get more folks out here. But I'll, I'll forward you that report. It's, it's really, it's really interesting.
It sounded, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Linda, I'm going to open it up for public comment real quick. Linda is, do we have any, any public questions, comments on this agenda item?
No ma'am.
Okay, then bringing it back, this is to receive and file, is that correct? Mr. Wolf?
That is correct, yes.
Alrighty. Shelby, thank you very much. We appreciate your comment.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me and I, I, we, we're up for renewal next year in, in July of twenty-one. So you'll be seeing a lot more of me and, and making sure you understand and know all the good stuff we're doing for you.
Terrific. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Shelby.
A pleasure.
Alright.
Thank you Shelby. Thank you Shelby.
Thanks John. Thank you Art.
Thank you.
Thanks Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you Academy. Thank you Academy. Thanks Chanel. Thanks Linda. Thanks Scott.
Agenda item number seven, presentation by the Monterey Bay Community Power CCA. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. If you'll recall, at your last city council meeting, staff brought back a, an option for the city council to once again consider bringing the city within the fold of one of several community choice aggregation programs. This was something that the city council had considered previously and for one reason or another had decided was not appropriate at the time. Since that point, a number of other jurisdictions within Santa Barbara County have made the decision to join a, a CCA program, in this case Monterey Bay Community Power was the choice of almost all of them. Given that that's been the case and the city council's continued interest, staff has invited a representative from Monterey Bay Community Power, in this case, Mr. J.R. Kilgrew, to join us here at the meeting this evening to briefly give a presentation as to what, what Monterey Bay Community Power can offer the city and its residents and answer any questions the council may have. And following his presentation, we will be, staff will be just looking for direction from the city council as to how you'd like to move forward with this. So, Mr. Kilgrew?
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Wolf, can everybody hear me loud and clear?
Yeah, welcome.
You can.
Yeah, I've got a one and a half-year-old and almost a four-year-old at home. So I'm locked in a corner and I put up all the sound barriers because we've got trolls and frozen going on. But in any event, it kind of warmed my heart to listen to the last speaker about, you know, the tourism industry down south. You know, seeing as Monterey Bay Community Power serves a very similar kind of area in terms of tourism hospitality, we're, we're big supporters of all those business groups, whether it's the Monterey County Tourism and Hospitality Association. We're, we're very much supporters of that industry and we have great ties with that industry in the region. So it's just good to hear that things are starting to move along and we hope to be a part of that in the future, especially down in Santa Barbara County. especially down in Santa Barbara County. So give me one second and I will load up my PowerPoint. I've actually had a couple of good experiences so far with virtual presentations, presenting to the county of Monterey as well as the city of San Juan Batista. And I actually have a colleague of mine who's presenting at the city of Capitola tonight. So just wanna make sure you all can see my screen. How about now?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay, how about now?
It's starting.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, beautiful. All right, well, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Council members. My name is J.R. Kilgrew. I'm the Director of Communications and Energy Programs. Before I, I launch into this, I, I do have to say I had quite an amazing experience between, I'd say February of last year through September, connecting with many of the cities in San Luis Obispo, but as well, as well as all of the cities in, in Santa Barbara County about this particular effort. As City Manager Wolf mentioned, the cities of Santa Maria, Solvang, Guadalupe, the County of Santa Barbara, Galita and Carpinteria all elected to move forward with joining Monterey Bay Community Power. The city of Santa Barbara is actually standing up their own program and then that leaves the city of Bulton to continue to deliberate on this particular matter. I do have to say this is probably gonna be my, if not my last, but second to last presentation is Monterey Bay Community Power. We actually have our, our, our board meeting next Wednesday. Well, we will be seeking approval from our board to become Central Coast Community Energy. So that is a huge, pretty much effort in terms of us kind of moving down the coast and seeing the kind of values and benefits of the brand and awareness of Central Coast as opposed to Monterey Bay, considering that we now are going to be serving communities across five counties as opposed to just three.
Congratulations.
So just a brief overview, you've probably heard this acronym CCA or sometimes CCE, that's Community Choice Energy. But effectively, it allows governments, local government, cities or counties to create these joint powers authorities to go out and source electricity on behalf of their constituents. It started back in 2002 with Assembly Bill 117 that allowed cities, cities and counties to have that mechanism to either be able to deliver programs, deliver cost savings or deliver reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. So it has been around for a while. It took about eight years for the first CCA to actually start service up in Marin in 2010. But fast forward to now, there are 21 CCAs that are serving about 30% of the electrical load in California. And when the city of San Diego comes online, I think sometime late next year, we will get an even larger jump and it's actually estimated that by 2025, about 70 to 80% of the electric load will be served by community choice aggregators across the state. And it really provides a, a regional, local approach to what are the values, the goals of that particular city, county or region as opposed to what you would get with the investor owned utility model, who's got that vertically integrated system of the power supply, the transmission and delivery and the billing. Now, how it works, we've really kind of evolved in terms of moving away from an us versus them. It's kind of an, an interesting dichotomy that's happening, but effectively you become a shared customer. The CCA becomes the primary electric service provider for all the eligible customers. The investor owned utility PG&E in your particular place assumes the role and continues the role as the transmission and distribution and billing entity for us. And at the end of the day, the customer still gets the same great service, the same great shared service now, but it actually comes at a lower cost. That's because we're able to go out and procure for lower cost contracts than the investor owned utilities have. A lot of that actually has to do with the fact that the market has matured, the cost of energy has gone down and some of those legacy contracts that the investor owned utilities had to get into unfortunately still have those carrying costs. So why in the world would you decide to evaluate something like this? I think at the end of the day, it, it provides a choice. It may not be a perfect choice. I'll be the first one to tell you that, yes, the enrollment process, you become a customer by default. But the point is, is that constituents in your community rely on the City Council to make good, strong decisions on behalf of their constituents. And through the public process, those folks can weigh in on what is this agency about, what's the value, who are they? Is this a good thing for us? And through that public process, you were able to kind of create that sense of choice. And so through that process and with the City Council passing those resolutions and ordinances, by default, you end up instituting that choice. But again, customers are able to opt out at any time. That's the one major benefit. Competition. Up until this point, you've only had one electric service provider, that's PG&E. It's good to have a little competition in the marketplace. Other component is the decision making. You will be a, a part of our board. Your constituents will be a part of our decision making process, whether through public comment, engaging through community groups, engaging through the membership groups that we're a part of. It really kind of opens up a dialogue to have a meaningful conversation about what it means to support the residents and businesses in Bulton. The other great thing is we provide really innovative programs. So we take surplus revenues and reinvest them in the community to help electrify. That's what we're all about, electrifying buildings and transportation, but also enhancing resiliency in light of the public safety power shut offs. Additionally, cost savings. At the end of the day, we can only be successful for, we're delivering competitive rates at a lower cost. And then finally, last but certainly not least, the support of the deployment of new renewable resources to help clean up the electrical grid in California. So who we are, this has been an amazing experience to see our, our logos expand. When we had our policy board meeting in December, we actually had all the representatives from Paso Robles, Pismo Beach, Royal Grande, Grover Beach, and then Santa Maria, Guadalupe, Solvang, the County of Santa Barbara, Galita and Carpinteria all come up. They had their little decal that we've created for them and they actually put it up on our board meeting wall when we brought them into the fold as a part of Monterey Bay Community Power. So we've come from a long way from humble beginnings of just starting in the Monterey Bay area. But now there is a lot of kind of values and consistency and opportunities that we see moving into a Central Coast agency. So right now, there's only a few folks that are still evaluating opportunities. That's the County of Santa, County of San Luis Obispo, the, the city of Bulton, as well as the city of Atascadero. But right now, we're 32 strong across five counties. Our governance, a lot of questions about how we govern. We actually have three, we have two formal boards and a community advisory council. I think that adds a level of transparency that's probably bar none to any other community choice aggregator. Our policy board is of elected officials, so mayors, supervisors or city council members. Our operations board is of city managers or county administrative officers. And then we have a group of community advisory council members who represent a wide variety of community groups, business groups, you name it. And all these folks meet on a pretty significant basis and it's all subject to the Brown Act. We're open to the public. And we've actually enacted an interesting board governance structure where communities over 50,000 get an individual seat, but communities under 50,000 get a shared seat by, by geography. So in this particular case, right now, Guadalupe and Solvang would share a seat. And if the city of Bulton were to decide to move forward with joining us, you ultimately would be a part of that seat. As you see down south, Galita and Carpinteria share a seat and then up to your north a little bit, the cities of Royal Grande, Grover Beach and Pismo, Prismo Beach share a seat. Accomplishments, you know, there are a lot of things that we could talk about, but I think at the end of the day, we like to talk about the proof is in the pudding. We've delivered over $17 million of customer savings since we launched service in March of 2018. So basically in about, give or take 20 months, that's the type of value we've been able to derive to our customer base. We've also set aside $12 million for energy programs that's helping with electric vehicle infrastructure. And actually I've heard through the grapevine, through some of my contacts at the county, that the city is moving forward with a, you know, an EV streamlining permitting code. So I very much appreciate your efforts in making sure that EV infrastructure is streamlined. But also we're very big on working with local vendors, whether it's through contracting on communications or you name it in the region. But then last but certainly not least, in terms of our fiscal responsibility, we're very much a, an agency that believes in making sure that we are a safe and secure agency. And right now, we've already achieved our reserve target. We've already got $120 million in reserves. We've paid off any of our debt or loans. That was actually done in the first six months of operation. And now we are actively pursuing a credit rating and there's a good chance that if things go well, we would be able to achieve that sometime by late summer, early, early fall this year. Now, I wanna get to like, what does it all mean from a customer standpoint? Right now with PG&E, you actually have three options. You have their default option, a 50% renewable option and then 100% renewable option. Well, with MBCP, you have two options. You have the default one, which is 100% clean energy. That is 34% renewable and 66% large hydroelectric. And that comes at about, about a 5% discount from PG&E's current rates right now. But if you're really supportive of just a renewable energy, you can support that through our MB Prime product, which is just eight tenths of a penny more than our, our current default product. And that actually is almost at parity to the PG&E default rate right now. So there is a good chance at some point in time that MB Prime rate will be actually lower than PG&E's default rate. One of the big, you know, drivers of the CCA movement is how are you gonna develop new renewable projects in California to help us clean up the grid and do it at an effective and affordable way? Well, we, we've been doing that pretty much in spades. So far to date, we've actually signed, I believe it's six, actually no, seven contracts for almost 300 megawatts of new California renewables as well as almost 150 megawatts of battery storage. And we're actually estimating that 40% of our customer consumption of energy will be met by new renewable projects that are based not only in California, but that are interconnected with the California grid. But actually, we are really excited about a battery storage project that we're finalizing an agreement in South Monterey County, right near the, the military base down there. And that's in partnership with Apple, who's doing, I think, 150 megawatt solar project. We're actually gonna bring on battery storage to help with stabilizing the grid. You know, I, I've heard mention of COVID tonight and the pandemic and I did wanna just mention what our response was to this. And that's one of the really amazing things about community choice energy programs is we are responsive to the community. We listen to the community. We got a lot of feedback from small, residential customers, low income customers, big customers saying, hey, we're gonna need some relief, especially in this region that's heavily built on ag and tourism and hospitality and healthcare. So with unanimous support from our board, we actually created this financial relief package which will reduce all of our customer rates by 50% in May and June that will deliver about a little over $22 million back into our customers' pocketbooks for the next two months. And in the bullet points, you're looking at about six and a half million for residential customers, 11 million for commercial customers, and then a little over 5 million for the agricultural businesses. And then moving on to our energy programs, so our, our, the way in which we kind of, we operate is that we go out on the wholesale market, we procure energy, we associate the necessary renewable energy credits or carbon free credits. We have to pay for what's called resource adequacy, then we have staffing time. And then we have our programs budget, which right now we set aside about 3, 3%, of our gross revenue. And then the remaining is dealt with putting into our, our reserve. But basically what we're all about is helping to electrify the Central Coast. So whether that's through vehicles, infrastructure, the built environment, we're really here to help take the surplus revenue that we have and put it back into our customers in our region. And one of the two most exciting things that have come out of MBCP in the last couple of weeks is, one, we've signed an agreement with our local air district to invest $1.2 million for school bus electrification. So we're gonna partner with the air district. They'll lever, leverage their state funds to provide zero cost school buses for school districts in the region. And we also just launched a program actually yesterday morning to support affordable housing and market rate multi-unit dwellings for new construction. If they're willing to go all electric, we're gonna provide them incentives to do so. And we actually had $1.2 million set aside for that. And we actually got well over $1.6 million of applications within the first five hours. So we're seeing a really great opportunity for us to be a partner with the region to address two of the major concerns of the region. One is housing and two is transportation and then additionally resiliency. And then I'm, I'm wrapping up real quick. I did wanna say that we are truly excited to present tonight and just connect with the great city of Bulton. As I mentioned, some key updates. We are changing, we are seeking board approval to change our name to Central Coast Community Energy. So if you, if the council decided to move forward with us, you would be coming on board as a part of Central Coast Community Energy and that's how your constituents would get to know us. We are establishing an annual board meeting. We meet for two days. It's gonna travel between Monterey Bay region and then the San Luis Obispo or Santa Barbara region, just to bring all of our board members together for a two day meeting. And we actually have opened up an office in San Luis Obispo where actually we have two full time staff there and we're gonna be looking to hire up more staff. And there is a potential for us to be hiring up staff to just be located in Santa Barbara and set up an office in Santa Barbara as well. So I know there has been some discussions about, you know, Los Olivos or Solvang or maybe Bulton or something like that because that's centrally located in Santa Barbara County. And then last but certainly not least, a, a more effective financially beneficial cost, cost of service rate structure. Because at this point, we've achieved reaching our reserve target and we'll be able to reduce the cost of our electric service so that we'll be able to delivering even more value to our customers across all rate classes. Did wanna just give a quick highlight, you know, we, we pulled some old, old data. Again, we don't have too much to go with for Bulton, but you know, we kinda just did a, a back of the hand calculation based on our current rates and, and what it would look like if the city of Bulton were able to join. Is that overall with a reasonable, you know, 5% opt out rate, we'd probably be looking at about a, a $1 million a year savings for your constituents in your community. That's the municipal accounts, residential accounts and, and, and commercial accounts collectively. Now, I think this is my second to last slide, but I did wanna just outline a process. We, we have all the documentation and everything in terms of resolution ordinances, staff reports, you name it. But effectively, in order to join MBCP, you'd have to have a, a first reading of the ordinance as well as an adoption of a resolution. And then at the subsequent meeting, you'd have to have a second reading of the ordinance. You'd also have to submit a data request form to PG&E to release the load data for all of the customers within Bulton for us to do analysis. And then within that package, you'd be able to submit that to us and then we would take that to our policy board. We have a policy board meeting in September. We'll, we'll be a little flex, we'll be flexible this year in light of what's going on with COVID right now. But you know, if, if this feels like the right move, we're certainly able to work with you to make this come to fruition. But again, we wanna be respectful that this is a pretty challenging time for everybody. But, but basically we'd be looking at filing a revised implementation plan. And basically that is that kind of overarching document that we send to the California Public Utility Commission to effectively say, these are the new communities that are coming on board. This is their load. This is what we need to procure to do that. These are the type of resources we have to do that. And then they certify that sometime early next year. And then we would start looking at enrollment activities in the late summer, late summer, early fall. And then the goal would be a beginning of service in January of 2022 because there is a one year waiting period right now that the Public Utilities Commission had, has put into place. But to summarize, again, I, I think, you know, humbly speaking, it would be fantastic to have you folks come on board. We wanna make sure that this model works for everyone, works for every city. If you look at our current service area, that are communities of wide variety of socio demographic classes all across inland ag, coastal, we pretty much have fit the bill for communities of all different walks of life. And so I think we're hoping at one point in time, we'll be able to, you know, work with Bulton, Atascadero and the County of San Luis Obispo and bring this group together and define us to be truly the Central Coast. Our board is, is, is quite focused on us just serving this area. And we really feel like it's an amazing area. The more I get to travel around the Central Coast, the more I get to know the customers down in Santa Barbara and slow. It's really just, it's becoming a, a kind of a lifelong dream just to be able Um, it's really just, it's becoming a, a kind of a lifelong dream, just to be able to kind of connect with this region. So at this point, um, be more than happy to take any questions.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, Mr. Killigrew.
Councilmember Andrisik, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Mr. Killigrew, is, is Assembly Bill one twenty-eight the, your, your marching orders? Or is that where your charter comes from? Would we find that in Assembly Bill one twenty-eight?
Yeah, it's Assembly Bill one, one seventeen, and it's actually been codified.
Seventeen, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, the CPUC code. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'll be happy.
That's quite all right. I, I just wanted to know where to, where we would find it. Okay, I'm glad I asked you. Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, any questions? Councilman Sanchez, Councilman King, any questions?
Uh, do you? I do have a couple of questions, Madam.
This is Councilman King, yeah.
Uh, do you have any intention of putting up, um, additional windmills?
Pigeon house.
Uh, we, right now, um, well, are, we have an MOU with Castle Wind, which is an offshore, uh, wind developer. But that's nothing more than a kind of a, a, an informal agreement to say that if they're able to move through the process with the Department of Army and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and there's actually a lease auction that moves forward. Um, if they were able to bring us back a, an offer, uh, that made financial sense, we'd be open to it. But right now, we don't have any contracts, uh, for onshore wind. Um, and most of all of our RFPs that we put out related to renewable energy, like the, the four or five we've, we've signed recently, have all just been for solar plus storage.
Alrighty.
But in the, wait, I, I follow.
Go ahead. No, 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 go ahead. Go ahead.
So, eh, but in the future, if you do get, uh, have these RFPs, you, you do have intentions of putting up windmills?
Yes, correct. As part of our, our requirement to achieve the, the renewable portfolio standard, um, you know, wind power can be very attractive as well as solar plus storage. So if there is a project that, um, is for wind and hopefully store, and, and battery storage, uh, we'd be certainly open to it as long as it made financial sense for us.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't have my speaker on.
No, you're just fine. Councilman Sanchez, any questions?
No, I just had a, a question. There was a list of things that have to happen after tonight if we approve or, or request tonight. There was like seven or eight different meetings, hearings, and all that. And I was just wondering, uh, what kind of costs we would incur with each one of these steps, with all the, um, legal fees and, and public meetings and all that. And, uh, I mean, cost-wise, it sounds like we're going to save money, but to get in here, we've got more steps to go, uh, with costs with each step. That was just my question. Maybe Scott would, uh, have a, an estimate of what each item here would cost, and it would add to our expense to, to get in.
Are there, are there costs associated? Go ahead.
So I, I, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Killigrew on this one. As I recall, there are a, a, a study or two that need to be undertaken in order to determine, uh, the amount of, of, uh, energy that might be required to be added to their contracts. Um, and the, 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 the sharing of the costs of that over the coming year. My past experience with this, we, we wound up, um, looking at expenses that range somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for the city. I don't know what this would look like with, uh, Monterey Bay Community Power, though.
Who would conduct the surveys and all that? Who would that be? Who would pay for that?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, City Manager Wolf. Uh, so yeah, there, there are costs that, uh, MBCP has to incur in terms of developing the implementation plan. Um, the, the best, the best thing I can offer you is that last year, the cost share was about, um, I think it was about six thousand dollars for each jurisdiction. Um, but again, at the end of the day, we would have to evaluate who's coming online. Um, you know, we've done multiple implementation plans. Um, it's something that we can kind of bring in-house more effectively now. So I would, I, I would have to get back to you in terms of what the actual costs would be, but I, I can't imagine it would be much more than that.
Okay, I just was wondering if we're spending all this money. And then, um, you said one of the expenses was eight tenths of a penny higher?
Yeah, so, yeah, and thank you, Councilmember. Um, yeah, just for clarification. So we have two, uh, two e- electric service offerings. One is called MB Choice, which we'll have to change. And the second one's MB Prime. So MB Prime is entirely voluntary. So that would take an act of a individual customer to say, I want to support a hundred percent renewable energy. And then there would just be an adder of eight tenths of a penny to their, um, uh, price per kilowatt hour. But you certainly, when you're initially enrolled in the program, you get your default option, which is MB Choice. And that comes at a savings right now of about three to five percent lower than PG&E rate.
That, that choice would be by the customer on this bill, like, like we get a PG&E bill. We, we get, we would have a choice as a customer, as a personal household to.
Yeah. Yeah, and a, a lot of that is us trying to kind of, uh, galvanize and support that decision. Because, you know, it's great, because if more folks start supporting, uh, that product, that means we'll have to go out and procure for more of that energy. But again, it, it is up to our, it is up to that customer to make that decision. But by default, they enter into a more competitive rate than they would if they were just with the investor-owned utility PG&E.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Mercado, any questions?
Uh, yes, um, I'm just wondering what happens, um, with, um, homeowners who have the solar, uh, panels on their house to have contracted with PG&E, uh, to, um, to purchase that electricity back from them? So do they have to opt out of the whole program? Or does PG&E continues to service those solars? Or, um, how, how does that work for, for homeowners?
Yeah, tha- that's a great question, uh, Vice Mayor. So the way our, our net energy metering program works right now is it, it matches the, the, the same tariffs that PG&E has. Uh, but more importantly is, we actually pay out more money, or we have a higher price per kilowatt hour for your net surplus compensation. So think of it like this. Over the course of a year, you produce a thousand kilowatt hours more than you actually consume. We actually pay you out, I think, about six and a half cents, whereas PG&E pays you out about three cents. There's, there's, so there's a kind of a, a marginal difference. I do want to be fully transparent, though, is that right now, um, we're working through a process where when somebody, um, trues up, there's something called, um, your kind of generation credits. Basically, you've produced, um, you've, you've not necessarily produced more than you consume, but you produced at times a day that are very lucrative. So you kind of have this particular credit, um, that you actually can offset some of the delivery charges. And so what the, the CCAs like ourselves are figuring out a way to make sure that those kind of generation credits can pass through to the delivery side. So, you know, we're really doing a, a, uh, we're making a concerted effort to work with every single NEM customer to make sure that, you know, let's evaluate your bill. If it's the right thing for you, let's do it. But if it's not, we want you to stay on the incumbent investor-owned utility. Because again, we, we don't want folks to get on this program if it's not the best for them. And again, we can't, we can't say that every single customer is going to be better off. Like, I'll give you another example, the economic development rate. I don't know if you folks have ever heard of that, but it's something where through the public goods charge, when businesses say, hey, I'm going to leave the state of California, it's a mechanism to keep them. Well, that mechanism actually reduces the rates so low that we cannot compete. So we actually had to opt out some of those customers and proactively call them. So we do a good job just trying to be cognizant of each individual customer's needs and make sure that they can make the best decision for their home. So, yeah, the vast majority of, of NEM customers work out and, and benefit from us. But some of them, we do want to work with them to stay with PG&E, because for some particular reason, it's better off for them.
Okay, great, thanks. That's, that's a big question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions, but I would like to, if you don't mind hanging on, I'd like to open this up to public comment. I have three letters to read into, uh, the meeting tonight. Linda, uh, do you have any more than the three I received?
No, I don't.
Okay, so the first one, uh, is, Dear Mayor Sierra and City Councilmembers, since two thousand fifteen, the city of Galita has explored community choice energy, CCE, programs for the purpose of providing choice in the electricity market, providing potential rate savings, supporting energy efficiency and resiliency, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, promoting regional collaboration, and contributing to economic development. On August twenty, twenty nineteen, the Galita City Council took action to join Monterey Bay Community Power Authority Community Choice Aggregation Program. The city of Galita encourages you to move forward with CCE and join Monterey Bay Community Power. The city of Galita sees tremendous value in joining an established and financially sound, forward-thinking agency that aligns with our goals and visions of the future to bring forth choice, local control, and local energy programs to our constituents. We look forward to working together toward a clean energy future. And it is in this cooperative spirit, we support your council's vote for CCE on May twenty-eighth. Sincerely, Paula Perotti, uh, Mayor, City of Galita. This one's a little bit longer. Dear Buellton City Council, I've become aware that Buellton is the only city in Santa Barbara County that has failed to join Central Coast Community Power, known as Monterey Bay Community Power, which I've been told will offer us more renewable energy options, local control, and more choice for our future energy use. As someone who has spent more than twenty Fridays in twenty nineteen, twenty, participating in our local effort of climate awareness, I'm deeply dedicated to making all the choices and taking all the actions we are capable of to switches to energy that does not include fossil fuel. My passion for this has not diminished. My action has simply been put on hold because of a pandemic. Use of fossil fuel is the burning of ancient sun energy, which is very deep within the earth. This choice is endangering our planet, our future, and the future of our children and grandchildren. We need to shift to burning today's sun energy, which is wind and solar. Jimmy Carter knew this back in nineteen seventy-six and took deep steps toward breaking the American addiction to burning ancient sun energy. Sadly, we fell off the wagon. We moved in the wrong direction. Carl Sagan spoke of global warming, which we now know is actually changing of the planet's entire climate, back in nineteen seventy-six. The science for this choice is nearly forty-five years old. Part of me can't believe we are still discussing it. An option is before us as a community. I strongly, passionately encourage you to follow the example of our neighbors. I deeply support joining Central Coast Community Power, AKA Monterey Bay Community Power. Let's join the rest of our neighbors here within the Central Coast communities. Let's make choices that lead to producing and buying clean energy in any ways available to us. Thank you for your service to our community. Please continue to remain safe during this difficult times. Thank you for your time consideration. I am very truly yours, Rosemary Verhean. I know I butchered her name, but she lives on Zaca. And one more, very short. Dear Mayor Sierra, please vote to support Buellton joining the Monterey Bay Community Power Cooperative, AKA Central Coast Community Power, as soon as possible. Joining this cooperative, along with most of the Central Coast communities, will bring many financial and environmental benefits to Buellton citizens. Thank you, Larry Bishop on Sycamore Drive. Uh, that's all I have for public, uh, comments. So I'm going to close it, bring it back to council. I do have to say, as part of Buellton's Green Team, uh, this kind of seems like a, uh, like a, a win-win. Those who want to participate can participate. Those who don't, don't, are not required to. And it gives us a little bit more local control. Um, any other comments from council before we give our city manager direction?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I have one more question for Mr. Killigrew, if possible.
Certainly, Vice Mayor Mercado, go ahead.
Uh, a question, you know, if more people have to opt out, uh, like we talked about and what you discussed, uh, with PG&E, how does that affect our representation on the board? Uh, because if our numbers were lower, do we still get? I mean, I know we'll probably still be in the shared part of it, but do we still get a, a, a percentage vote or an equal share vote? Or how does that work?
Yeah, and thank you again, um, um, Vice Mayor Mercado. So, yeah, right now, the way, um, uh, the board government structure is set up is, you, you, you work to set up an agreement with a particular city. In this particular case, right now, um, Arison Julian, the mayor of Guadalupe, is the representative for the, um, for the Guadalupe Solvang seat, and then city, city manager Bodems as well. And so the next cycle, most likely, would be the mayor of, of Solvang. But effectively, if, if the, if customers leave service, um, there's not necessarily that, that element where you're no longer going to have as much of a vote. It's, it's more about if there ever came a time to have kind of a, a thirty-two or thirty-four-member agency vote, um, even if, you know, half of your constituency left. I mean, you, you'd still effectively have the same, same voting privilege. Um, because the, the load that we saw for, for the city of Buellton is about, um, I think it's, uh, thirty-six million kilowatt hours per year. So, um, i- it's not huge, but it's still important. So it, it's, it's one of those cases where, um, you know, it, it wouldn't make, it wouldn't make too much of an impact. But we're also looking at, um, seeking approval for a new governance structure that would allow for, you know, non-voting members to be able to be seated and provide their opinions and perspectives on it. So it's kind of an evolution of this agency moving towards how do we effectively serve the, the five-county region? So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Andrisik, any, any comments? Any, any thoughts?
No, ma'am, I appreciate the, um, the exposure to this.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Sanchez, any, any comments, any thoughts?
No, I just took, uh, a question. If, if half the people in Buellton don't want to change, then that's, that's fine with, uh, that is, I'm just concerned about the feasibility of doing all these studies for half the people that won't change. So that reduces the customers by half, and then that's all. I just want to make a point. I don't know if it's worth doing for a few people that might change. Just an option, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm, of course, I'm the eternal optimist. So I think it would be a, a much bigger portion of residents who find that they're going to save on their electric bill by joining this. I, I could be wrong, but I'm an optimist, John. Uh, Councilmember King, any thoughts or comments?
Um, yes, the, the, the reason I kind of ask about the windmills is I don't, I, I don't know if any of you have ever been at Tehachapi or Mojave Desert, driven from sea to sun, shining sea like I did five years ago. My problem with, my problem with this renewable energy is that the windmills, for all intents and purposes, are very inefficient. Not to mention the fact that if you drive across Utah, Arkansas, Oklahoma, there are thousands and thousands of these windmills. And honestly, I think it's like going to the beach and having the beach littered with trash from one end to the other. They're, they're the biggest eyesores I've ever had to experience driving across this majestic country. And if you drive into Arkansas, Arkansas is wooded. Like, you know, almost the entire state is wooded, except for the fact that they have put up these windmills. And they are absolutely an abysmal eyesore. So having the opportunity for us to join into this group and then say that we have RFPs out for windmills, I mean, what are you getting into? I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here looking across the San Yves River up on the Jackson's property. And if you strewed windmills across all those, uh, oak trees, that would be a travesty. So tha- that's my apprehension about going to renewable energy.
Mr. Killigrew, can you?
Madam Mayor, I had a.
Can you address that?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy. Uh, thank you for the comments, Councilmember King. Um, I, I mean, you, you bring up very reasonable points of, like, what is the best use of land? Um, is it for open space? Is it for housing? Is it you, is it for? Is it for renewable energy? Effectively, renewable energy is the least cost-effective use of land. So developers have to find those areas that you really can't do anything else with. And it's not just CCAs that are deploying renewable resources. It's the investor-owned utilities. It's the municipal utilities. Everybody who's a part of the state of California has to meet certain standards, what one is called the Renewable Portfolio Standard. So by 2030, all utilities have to reach an annual production of 60% of their energy consumption from their customers has to be met by renewable resources. And that could be from biomass. That could be from small-scale hydro. It could be from geothermal. It could be from wind or it could be from solar. But I think, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we will not enter into agreements that aren't going to make financial sense for us. And most likely, where these wind farms are set up are in pretty kind of barren environments. But again, you know, I appreciate your perspective. But I think at the end of the day, the alternative is, you know, what are the natural gas plants doing to communities in Contra Costa County on the northern waterfront, where there's like 3,000 megawatts of natural gas? And you have the highest asthmatic rates in the state. So there's definitely kind of a respectful push and pull about this debate about an equitable movement towards energy that's reliable and cost-effective.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Remember, Dave, when we went to the smart meter? I'm wondering if this, can we look at how we receive the smart meter on our electric billing versus the standard that we had? I know there was some consternation and it was always would all work out. And I'm just curious if this somewhat aligns itself to that paradigm shift of energy, one of the energy products of our area?
I had mine taken off.
I know. I was just wondering. Is that work, did that work in your favor? Or have you found frustration with it?
Yeah, I think it worked in my favor because at certain times during the day, if I had a higher energy use, they would charge me an exorbitant amount for the higher energy use during that period of day. And I'm home in the afternoon, and so I'm running the dishwasher or whatever else. It costs me more money to have that smart meter on my house.
Okay, I just, I thought it reminded me of the conversations we had when that was being presented to us. So thank you for the input.
And I do know, I've been told PG&E uses the wind. That's part of their renewable, too. Dave, any more thoughts or comments?
Well, if you said you were building a nuclear power plant to put out 25 gigawatts, I'd say put it in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Mercado, I can't give you the evil eye from here. Go ahead.
No, I, thanks, Mr. Kilgrew, for presenting a nice presentation and very informative. I think it gives us something to think about, like I said. My concern was just, when we first looked at it a year and a half ago or so, whenever, was that there was so much, not so much inequality, but just the lack of, because of a small city like we are, losing representation and not having a full seat at the table. And that concerns me. And but it looks like we would get a fair share of voting privileges. So thank you for that information.
Do you remember when Santa Barbara came to us trying? They were going to set up a CCA. And we were asking, I thought, very intelligent questions, and they didn't really know the answers because this was brand-new to them, too.
Exactly.
The one wonderful, working with the Central Coast Community Energy, or Monterey Bay, is that they have been in business for a while. They're very well-established. They've got money in the bank. They, you know, I respect Paula Perotti very much. And I just think this would be a good direction to move forward to, giving our residents an option, giving them the opportunity. We say we want to be green, and this is a wonderful way to do it at a very low cost to the city of Buellton. And I would like to pursue this. Anybody, do I have, anybody else feels the same way? We need to give direction to our city manager, to city staff?
I agree. Like I said, that was one of the issues that we had. The presentation was that it was new. It was kind of looking like we would, like I said, you know, representation part of it. And the fact that we would be having to manage this. And for a little town like us, we don't need to be in the electricity business. But I don't have a problem with having Scott give us and get more information for us and see where we can go with that.
Terrific. Anybody else on the train or on the green train?
I think it's worth considering. But I think Art brings up good questions. And it'd be nice to, I guess, be more assured that it will be a benefit for us rather than a burden.
Okay. Okay, let's see. John and Dave, are we willing to move forward on this tentatively?
Yeah, I mean, if Scott can give us more information. And I'm also kind of concerned in the same area that Art is concerned in is that, you know, what kind of voice are we going to have in this? You know, we could be the little kid on the block and just get pushed around. But if we can get some more information on it, then we can certainly look into it.
I think even as the little kid on the block, we have more input into this than we do with PG&E.
That's possible.
Well, hopefully, once they look at us, like I said, you know, if they give us the information that, yeah, it can work, that sounds. But if somebody who has solar and has a good representation through PG&E, and they tell us to opt out, that's fair. I mean, I would rather have them give us that type of information and say, no, you just got to come with us. And that's just the way it is. But it seems like they're willing to evaluate each individual consumer and see that. So he answered my questions fairly and honestly, and I appreciate that. And those were my big concerns. And so I don't have any problem about going forward with it and getting having Scott get us more information.
So Scott will start taking the steps that Mr. Kilgrew has pointed out. And then we'll see whether or not we are a good fit for them or that they're a good fit for us. Agreed, gentlemen?
Yeah.
That sounds great. I will bring back to a future city council meeting here after having some discussions with Mr. Kilgrew and his staff, what seems to make sense for Buellton or what the facts are and whether they make sense for Buellton in particular with regard to issues such as governance, the opt-in, opt-out status of our residents and businesses with this, and then the costs of the city that would be incurred in order to join the CCA. Any other issues?
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Mr. Kilgrew, thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity. It was great to connect with all of you virtually. And, you know, I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Stay safe. I'm looking forward to continuing it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgrew.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Agenda item number eight. Consideration of Extension of Contract with Buellton Business Association slash Chamber of Commerce for Operation of a Visitor's Bureau. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. On June 30th of this year, I'm sorry, I have a typo in the staff report here. The contract between the city and the Buellton Business Association and Chamber of Commerce for operation of the Visitor's Bureau will expire. This is the expiration of the latest two-year extension period of the contract that's been in place for a good number of years. Staff's been in discussion with the chamber staff to bring to the city council a revised contract for the coming period. Unfortunately, as with so many other issues that we've had in the past several months, COVID-19 has reared its ugly head and imposed itself on our operations here. The health order restrictions that have been in place associated with COVID-19 have resulted in an inability for the Visitor's Bureau to expend the entirety of the funds that the city has paid it for the current fiscal year to encourage tourism within Buellton. Obviously, with the closure, required closure of most of our businesses here locally, in particular our restaurants, our wineries and breweries, and our hotels, the tourism industry has kind of been ground to a halt. The chamber estimates that there would be between $60,000 and $80,000 potentially from the current fiscal year's contract, which would not be expended. So with this in mind, they approached staff with the idea of holding those funds into the next fiscal year and reducing the next fiscal year's budget by an equivalent amount. Staff looked at that and found that it would be particularly viable. It would reduce potentially the monthly expenditure of the city to the Visitor's Bureau. And additionally, because they already hold that $60,000 to $80,000, it would allow them a larger pool of money with which to take action when the health restrictions are lifted. And then they can jump right to the business of rebuilding our tourism industry here in the area. This is not a standard approach. And because it's not a standard approach, staff felt that it was appropriate to bring this back for a single-year extension to the contract and revisit a more standard contract with some more significant potential changes to it next year, this being, we'll call it, a rebuilding year and kind of a deviation from the way things have been done in the past. So I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have. Kathy Vreeland, the executive director of our Visitor's Bureau, is here this evening as well to answer any questions. And we'll be happy to take the city council's direction. There is not a draft contract with, in the council's packet this evening. What we're looking for this evening is direction from the city council as to what form that contract should take, if the council has any objections or concerns about the proposal that's been put forward. And then staff will return at a future city council meeting with that contract that the city council would like to see for adoption at that point. So with that, I'll conclude my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Wolf? Kathy is online now.
Kathy, you're muted.
Yep, I just, I mean, I'm here. Hi, thank you.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Okay, so first, we're going to start with any questions for Kathy or Scott. Councilmember Andrisik?
No, ma'am.
Okay, councilmember Sanchez?
You're muted, sir.
There you go.
I think we're going to be more than ever.
Any questions? For Scott or Kathy?
I just wanted to thank, I think we're going to need Kathy for this goes by. I think it's out of proportion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember King, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Mercado, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Kathy, you know me. I've always got questions. So this is for a one-year extension that will end when our fiscal year ends in June 30th of next year, correct? That's what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. I realize that Solvang did not handle their Visitor's Bureau very well. And so there were a couple of things that caught my eye here. I was worried that you want to change the, if we cancel our contract with you, that we give you a six-month cancellation time period? Is that correct?
So that, and I don't even know if that needs to be initiated on this term, Holly. Maybe that's in the future, if we look at it in a year. I don't know that that's super relevant right now. That was something, if we were going along normal, we might ask for that now. But with COVID, things kind of went sideways. So basically, that's down the road. And that was just a matter of making sure that that transition is smooth, right? With whomever were to come in, that we would work side by side with them to make sure that that transition was well. And we just don't want to put Buellton in a bad spotlight. Like, we kind of learned from our neighbors of how that went. And we just want to assure that any transition in that regard were to go smoothly, if that change was going to happen. So, yeah, I don't know what.
I don't know what we have currently. Is it a 30-60 day? That's usually what it is.
I think it's a 60-day by either party written notice. I think that's what it is. I can double-check on that again. I believe that's.
Okay, yeah.
So just a play nice thing, really. I mean, we want to make sure that Buellton's not seen in a negative way. You know, if something were to happen similar to what happened next door, we want to make sure that that transition is smooth and friendly, and business can go on. So that's basically what that was about.
Got it. I just, yeah, six months when we're renewing it for one year, it just seemed.
No, again, I don't think that's relevant.
Yeah, and honest to goodness, I can't imagine. Everybody here truly appreciates what you and Jody do. The council has not changed in Buellton to where it's like 180-degree turnaround from "we love you one day" to "boom, you're gone the next day." Yeah, that just isn't, I do see down the line, only because we've done it with our trash services, our street sweeper, our attorney, and tonight with engineering, possibly putting out an RFP, making sure that we do have the best for our community. But like our attorney, when we put that out there, we ended up with the same firm that we've had since inception because they are the best. I can't imagine anybody being better than the service, the contract that we have with you and Jody. I just think it's important for a town to be looking, to always make sure that we've got the best for our community. But, yeah, the 60-day, the one-year extension, I think, is perfect. The other one, I just wanted clarification. It said that you would keep all images and photos. Do you mean we would share them? Or that all the money that you've spent for photo and images, same with you?
No, I think we could share them, Holly, if possible, just so we would have those assets accessible. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I so remember reading and hearing everything going on with our neighbors 10 minutes away. And I don't want this to ever turn into one of those, well, we've got this and you've got that. And I, yeah, okay.
And that's how we felt, too. I mean, we kind of looked at that and went, wow. You know, we never really discussed that because I never saw it getting that ugly, maybe. But, you know, I thought, well, maybe if something is in writing or that the policy is there, then we know how each other has, you know, what we all have to do and what our roles are in that regard. So, yeah, and just a little bit on, you know, I mean, we're plugging along. I'm definitely in contact with our PR team and marketing throughout this whole thing of what that looks like, what the recovery looks like, what the messaging is going to be. We did get one hit, I think I shared it with all of you, the story on P. Sufi Anderson's and the recipe. That was a huge, huge, I mean, you know, because the website traffic had been slow. There's, you know, we had to kind of stop marketing, stop inviting people. It was just everything kind of came to a halt. So that story came out, and it was just great. We started seeing some hits on our website again. So that was a win in a kind of, in a good way because we didn't have to put a lot of money at it. So our PR team has been working. We've been in conversation with them throughout this whole time just to know what the messaging should be, what our social media should look like. So if you follow us, you'll see we put out some, you know, digital puzzles about Buellton and some images of Buellton people could play with, coloring pages, virtual tours. So we're doing all kinds of things like that just to keep people engaged and kind of stay in the forefront of our visitor's mind. So when we do come back online and start inviting people back, we've been out there in front of them, but in a different way. It's just been a different way, so.
Okay, yeah, I truly appreciate it. And I know that we're talking about the Visitor's Bureau tonight, but I do want to take just a really quick. Bureau tonight, but I do want to take just a really quick minute before the attorney tells me I can't get off topic, and thank our Chamber of Commerce for all the outreach to all of our businesses with all the right connections. I know city staff has tried to do the same thing on our, on our city website, but the Chamber of Commerce has been sending out just every week information, who to contact to get help, and what all the rules are, and I truly, truly do appreciate that. I'm sure our businesses have gotten a lot of benefit from that, so.
I hope so.
Thank you very much.
We kind of pivot there as well, and, you know, just in that regard, our buellton.org site, that's the Chamber site, we have all those references and links listed, so if you're talking to any of the businesses with people and they need help, you know, the signs that they need to post in their business, any of the links for help, we've got all kinds of resources there for them. So we just continue to update that. I meet weekly with Chambers in our county, as well as up in San Luis Obispo County, and then just within our region. So we have standing meetings every week where we're communicating and knowing what's happening in each other's areas, and what we all need to be communicating together, so we're all on the same page. So it's been, it's been very interesting, a lot of long hours, a lot of meetings, and just trying to stay on top of it. You know, it changes, as you know, every day, maybe sometimes by the hour, so anyhow, it's, I'm hoping our businesses are being helped with what we're putting out there, and I know we've had, tried to call around to all of our members just to check in with them, see how they're doing, if there are ways that we could help, and just kind of do a checkpoint on them. So, yeah, that's, they're, I'm really proud of our community, and I'm sure you all see what's going on as well, but the innovation and just the way they've all pivoted to continue to be open for us and our community has been really amazing. So, and some of them might continue some of the things that they started, which is awesome. So it's a good time, it's great to see things starting to open now, too, so we'll stay on top of all that as well.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Linda, do we have any public that want to get in on this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay, bringing it back to council, this is just for direction, then, I guess? Again, comment and direction?
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. I just want to thank Kathy and being on the city's representative to the Chamber and so forth. They do an outstanding job, and with the pandemic going on, getting geared up here in the next 45 to 60 days will be very important. We're all going to be, A, wanting to get out, but B, everybody's going to be looking for the same information. So the ability to have someone like Kathy to always be looking out for the best issues of Buellton, I think is a, is a great advantage for us, and I think with what we have to deal with right now, the one-year contract would be fine. I think the idea of keeping the $60,000 to give them a little, like a bridge loan or so forth, but give them a stepping stone to get the ground running and going forward.
Yeah, and I do appreciate that that money will be taken out of what the city owes them. I truly appreciate that. I, you know, the, we get into Agenda 10 with our $1.134 million hit just to the city. I know businesses have been hit really hard, too, but that is very much appreciated.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We're looking forward to ramping up, and we're discussing all of those campaigns and whatnot as we speak, so we're kind of looking forward to how that looks coming out of it. A little side note, I don't know, the billboard on McMurray Road, our big "Together" part has been vandalized, tagged, whatever you want to call it, so we'll be replacing that with maybe another message, uplifting message, but, yeah, just this last week, we learned of that. So that'll take a couple weeks to get done and get back, but anyhow, it's, it's a bummer. I don't know how to stop that. It's people, you know, they're just, they're bored, and that's what they end up doing, so.
That's the second time, isn't it?
Yeah, we've had, the one up north was, it's been a couple times, we were able to paint over the one up north, so we didn't have to replace the vinyl. We kind of tried to paint over where they got it. It wasn't super dark, or over all the lettering, so we kind of lucked out, but this one's been hit a couple of times. It's just closer to the ground, it's easier and more accessible, so it happens. But just if you see it, or somebody tells you, you know, we're on it, we're trying to come up with a message, and we'll get that replaced, so.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Councilmember Andrisik, any thoughts, any direction?
No, I think, I think we're right on track. I appreciate the forethought and, you know, looking ahead instead of being told, "well, we didn't see this coming, and here we are." So I think we're in the driver's seat on this.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez, we're moving, we're giving city manager direction to just process this through the end of the fiscal year, correct?
It sounds good. I just wanted to make the comment. I went to LA on Saturday, and the traffic was red hot from the Thousand Oaks all the way to Santa Barbara. I think that everybody's getting out of there, and they got to come here, so I appreciate Kathy's effort getting them to pull over in Buellton, so thank you.
Yeah, we're trying. It's not supposed to be leisure yet, but we can't, we just give them...
Sheriff's Department issued a lot of parking tickets in Santa Barbara over the weekend.
Oh, I bet.
Lot of LA people parking in the no-parking zones, just to get to the beach, yeah.
Where do they get their masks, Bill?
Councilmember King, any thoughts or comments?
No, ma'am, except that I really appreciate everything that Kathy's been doing, and Jody, they're just doing a great job promoting the city of Buellton. Just congrats.
Thank you. All righty, I heard from Art. I think that's everybody. Mr. Wolf, you've got direction to staff?
The direction that I have is to return to the City Council with a one-year agreement, continuing the Chamber's services, the Visitors Bureau, reducing the amount of the contract from the anticipated budgeted amount by the amount that's not been spent for this current fiscal year. I will not be placing in it a six-month period dealing with the potential termination and/or any issues regarding images and photos. We'll deal with that in the next contract term.
Wonderful. And so they'll just be shared. Okay, thank you. Kathy, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we got two, two big ones next. Let's see, Agenda Item 9 now, you're welcome to stick around, is a special or possible award of contract regarding engineering services. Director Hess?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Is my volume coming through clearly for you guys? Can anyone hear me?
It's muffled.
It's still muffled?
What number are you? It's already on. It's on.
Okay. Okay, we'll try to make it as clear, and I'll speak as loudly as I possibly can.
That's better.
Much better.
Excellent. I'll speak to my, she's speaking to my children voice.
Yeah.
Okay, so earlier in this year, the staff and a couple of members of City Council have been meaning to go over the request for proposals for this year's engineering services. On the end of February, the council approved the request for proposals for engineering services, which the city posted online and sent out to nine different firms in Southern California that perform these type of municipal services. The due date was on April 16th, in which the city received two proposals, one from M&amp;S Engineers and one from Tetra Tech. So these two firms are who the city currently has contract with for engineering services. And M&amp;S Engineers provides a general engineering support services, and Tetra Tech provides development support services, and also working on utility and encroachment permits, as well as water and sewer support with CIP projects. As part of the review process, staff utilize an outside advisory panel, a technical panel consisting of SB CAG Director of Programming Sarkis Kaczek, the County of Santa Barbara Engineering Manager Leroy Cadena, and Goleta Sanitary District General Manager Steve Wagner. And those three gentlemen were kind enough to spend their time and review and rank the They also had a Zoom meeting in which they discussed the proposals, the structure, current staff workloads, and just staffing in general, and all relative to the engineering services and scope of work that was requested in the RFP. So tonight, we have a representative of the panel, Mr. Leroy Cadena, and he'll go over the panel discussion and the rankings. Leroy, it's all yours.
Well, thank you, Rose. So, good evening, council. Thank you. So we reviewed the both proposals, and we ranked them based on criteria that was given to us. And unanimously, we all agreed that both proposals were close, but they were close in the ranking system. In fact, I think we were right. My personal numbers were about three points difference, so.
They were both pretty close.
But, yeah, they were, they kind of both came from different areas, or different fields, points of interest. The Tetra Tech proposal was very thorough in explaining how they would, how the contract would work, and very explicit on how, there was specifically what stuck out in most of our minds was a seven-step process to acquire a proposal. There were seven steps that they wanted to go through in order to accept the job, a new They, at every point, they listed people that were qualified for the firms, and probably the shortcoming on the Tetra, for our standpoint, the shortcomings on the Tetra Tech proposal was that they signed in five references, but three of the cities listed were not on the Central Coast. And they, obviously, they didn't work for the city of Buellton, but they didn't reference any of that, of that work. So just looking at this, apparently, just as, as a proposal, I do review a lot of proposals for the county, and of course, we see repeating companies, so we have to look at each proposal independently, try to not look at our knowledge, what we know of the companies, but what are they presenting their proposals, kind of like a test, you know? We're looking at each one of them independently. And so that was probably one of the bigger areas that the Tetra Tech kind of did not receive points. But they definitely presented their qualifications. I guess we kind of felt like maybe they didn't really have the experience that they wanted to show, or they just didn't show it in this proposal. M&amp;S, on the other hand, had listed many, many points of projects that they have done for the city and for local agencies. I think here, if I have it right, they had listed 12 cities, and five of those were on the Central Coast, and two counties were listed, Santa Barbara being one of those counties, which of course Buellton resides, and would be working closely with. They lost points or didn't gain as many points in the area of where their office, where the main office would be. We didn't see anything that really said it would be, it would be in the Buellton office, of course, we assumed it would be.
They didn't really give them points, because that really wasn't in the proposal.
So it was very close. In summary, we kind of felt that the Tetra Tech proposal seemed like to get tasks done that would be very difficult. They were very adamant about this seven-point step, and so, you know, if you have a large task, you'd want something, you know, if you had a multimillion-dollar scope or task, you'd want something like this, you know, you vet it through properly. But it appeared in their proposal that even if you had like a small, you know, $20,000 or $30,000 improvement, that you would still have to go through that seven, seven-step process, which really seemed like that would be onerous, and might even cost you more to go through the process and to get the job done. M&amp;S, on the other side, had basically one contact person, I believe, that was Kent Yankee, and all the projects would go through him, which I think, you know, for a lot of the small projects, that's the way you'd want to go. And so that was kind of our breakdown of the proposals, and being in Public Works, all three of us kind of felt that if we had, you know, to make a choice, make a winner, that we all, and from our experience, we probably want to work in the easier environment, since like what M&amp;S proposed, which is being able to, if you have a lot of smaller tasks, you want to just be able to get them done. You don't want to spend two weeks trying to get a proposal for, to get that done. Depending on how many big projects you think you'd have, you know, that might be a consideration of how, how you would want to choose your service provider.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Answer any questions that you might have.
Terrific. Let's, let's do that first. Councilman, let's see, Councilman Andrisik, any questions for Mr. Cadena?
I have a comment, so I don't know if you would like to hear a comment, or perhaps it would stimulate some questions, but I'll, I'm coming at it from a different...
Put it in comment, in question form.
Okay, well, we came in question form that, I went over to Chanel a couple of days ago, and I asked her to get, is it possible to get a 36-month, three-year running total? So both the people that we rely on for our planning is, you know, they are, they are involved, M&amp;S and Tetra Tech. And I was, I got back the sheet, and I asked, I prepared a package of what she gave me for each of, each of the council members and staff to have. I don't know if it is an appropriate time to have it, but the lion's share was a concern I had in this period of, for the last three years, we have, Tetra Tech has received $375,706 in expenses. That's been their portion of the city's obligations, and M&amp;S, that same period, is And I'm looking back, and I've been, and I think almost the whole council has been at the table during the last five years, when this, all of these, you know, this, this back and forth has been who is a better, who is a better manager of our contracts. And so, you know, I'm sitting here listening, and I hear about qualifications, and we're getting told, and this happened the last time, when we were given, you know, recommendations, said, "well, let's, let's split it up, and let's, you know, let's try to cut the baby in half, or make, you know, be more fair." And I've, I've reached out to both firms, and I feel that they both honestly feel and have credentials that they are qualified to do the things that they, that we are asking either one of them to do. But tonight, in our qualifications, we've got comments regarding reference to points and experience, and the, and there are assumptions being made, and we went through this last time, and I'm... And the, and there are assumptions being made, and we went through this last time, and I'm, I'm feel, it rattles my cage, I guess, that someone, someone that isn't in our purview, but has been chosen by someone who we don't know, has said, these are the points, and these are the people, and we're going to recommend these people, and there you need to do that. So I'm, and then they, you know, there's, there's some assumptions and innuendo with comments that are not, not at all supportive of Tetra Tech. And the last time we went, it was a much more, hey, come on, let's, you know, we're going to make sure that Tetra Tech is given their fair share. I believe that Tetra Tech is qualified to do more than they have been allowed to do, because M&amp;S has somehow been maybe at the driving, the helm of whether through, it's just, you know, there, there have been inputs that seem, that assumptions are made, and I consider them innuendos that are derogatory to Tetra Tech. So if, you know, when I've asked both of them, I, I don't have to ask M&amp;S, because M&amp;S has always been at the city, and we have always done business with them. One of the, one of the notes that I made to myself, which I'm looking for, is a reality is, we've, we've never had Tetra Tech by themselves. And I mean, you know, we, we had, we've had representatives from M&amp;S say, hey, you know, we'll be fair, we can, we can make sure we, they get some things along the way. And so I made this note that we've never had Tetra Tech do the whole program.
Now, M&amp;S has been.
And I don't want to get into that, that situation, so I'm, I'm just, that's the input I had. So I thought I, I've handed it out, so each of the council members could look at it in deliberating. Maybe it does not need to be fixed tonight, and if there's more consideration needs to be made. But I, I think that having been around the whole time that these two firms have been with our city, I, I would like, I think we're getting, we're getting kind of directed from people that aren't financially involved, like every one of us on the council are financially involved in the benefits and the performance within our city. And so that, I just wanted to let you know that I laid that out.
Thank you, Ed.
Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cadena.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if I may, I think that there was a good request for information there, and that was, how is the panel constructed? What are the qualifications? And is this a normal standard process, or is this process sort of outside the norm? To have a panel like this make the recommendations that they are?
Thank you, Grace. Should we have Rose?
Yes.
If we could go down that road, that would be helpful.
Yes, I can respond to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
During proposal reviews, it is standard procedure to get a review committee, a panel, to review the proposals received. In this type of situation, it's customary to get a panel of outside agencies, professionals from outside agencies that have similar, similar roles in which they would evaluate or use such types of firms. That gives you a technical background, so they understand my needs for an engineering firm, and the type of scope of work that they're looking at. The reason you use and want to use an outside panel is because it provides like a third party, it's an outside view. They've, you're right, they don't have a monetary interest in this. So they're looking clearly just at the review of the proposals and the scope of work, and that is submitted by each of the applicants. So I don't think that there's any intention, or there is anything derogatory about the review. They're looking at criteria such as, let me see if I can find that here. Local experience, similar type of scope of work experience, location of the firm, capability of staff locally or wherever. There's standard-type criteria that we're looking at based on the RFP that we put out. So that is what they're evaluating each of the firms on. And all that does really is, is to try to put a frame of reference that is something that you can compare the two firms on, as opposed to, you know, this is just, it's a hazard type of review. There's something that they're looking at to help quantify the decisions. Because yes, you're looking at the two firms, and sure, they are very, they're both have good qualifications. They're both civil firms, they both, you know, can provide, you know, different design-type services. And it's a matrix that's used to help basically quantify that. And so that's the evaluation that Mr. Cadena is providing to us tonight.
If I can add to that, Madam Mayor.
Please, please.
It's, it's important to note here beyond just the quantification, that the, the role of this panel was to review the proposals that were, that were brought in in light of the request for proposal that the city sent out, to review the qualifications of each firm, and the ability of each firm to fulfill the requirements that were included in that, in the scope of work within the request for proposals, and to provide a recommendation to the city council. That's what's being proposed, or that's what's being provided here by Mr. Cadena, is the, is the recommendation of that, that third-party independent panel in reviewing the proposals that came in. That being said, it is only a recommendation to the city council. The city council had, I would say, I'd look at, I'd point the staff report, and note that there are four potential options that the city council may take. But in reality, there are any number of different options depending upon how the city council wishes to divide work, or if the council wishes to divide work between firms. I'm sure that if we talk to the various members of the panel, that most of them would probably come to the conclusion that it is desirable to have a single point of contact for an engineering firm like this. However, the model that we've seen with the city where we have two different firms providing different aspects of service to the city, seems to be working fairly well. At this point, it really is a policy call on the part of the city council. Which way would you like to see that go? Now, where I would caution the council is that there has been some discussion in the past about, let's, let's say, splitting the baby, or making, making sure that we have some, some sort of equity or an equality in the contracts. This is, from my perspective as a manager, this is, this is dangerous ground to tread upon. Because when we're comparing two firms and what the city is providing, or is paying to those two firms, one also needs to look at the work that's being produced by those two firms. So going back and looking at the amount of funds that have been expended on either firm for the past three years is illustrative, really only in terms of how much work has been produced by each of those firms on behalf of the city. And we can look at that, because of the way the breakdown between the two firms has been for the past several years. One firm has handled primarily the public side of things, the city's projects. The other side has handled the private side or more planning-oriented projects. And if you look at the way the economy has run, the city's capital improvement projects have been pretty steady over the past several years, whereas you'll see that, that the planning projects within Buellton in particular have been much more sparse than they were a few years before. So that, that would go a good way toward explaining the disparity. What I really want to point out here, though, is the city council will need to take a look at, at this. Take the, take the independent panel's recommendations into consideration. But ultimately, the council needs to make a decision as to how you feel the city's needs can best be served by one or both of these firms in combination. And then we can, we can move forward from there and try and determine what that, if, if one firm or the other is the desire of the city council, that makes the decision fairly easy. If it's in combination, in a combination that's different than what we've seen the city undertake here in the past, we'll need to get a little deeper into this. It'll require a little more time to work out an agreement with a scope of work for each consultant. This is a complicated matter. I don't want to try and make, and simplify it by saying, listen to what the panel is telling you and go with that, or look at what the expenditures have been over the past several years and go with that. The council really has to take a look at what, what the city wants to gain, what their priorities are, and how each of those firms individually or collectively can meet those goals going into the future.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank Mr. Cadena and the other two panelists, because I must say, they volunteered to read both of the, both of the applications and get together to discuss it. It took a lot of time out of their schedules, they were not paid for it. They are strictly volunteering to help the city of Buellton, and we do appreciate it. So I'm going to move on. I thought what I would do is give the council members a chance to ask Mr. Cadena any questions. And then we just very briefly give a couple minutes to, two to five minutes to each of the engineering firms, a minute, a chance to talk, answer any questions, and then bring it back to council. So, let's see, Councilmember King, any questions for Mr. Cadena?
Not at this time, your honor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I've got too many courtrooms.
Councilman Sanchez, any questions for Mr. Cadena?
I had a question about this, if maybe Jason could help. There's a seven-step program with every.
We'll get into that when they come up. This is just for Mr. Cadena right now.
He made a comment about the seven-step.
Right. And I'm going to give Jason a chance to explain it when we're done with Mr. Cadena.
Thank you, Mr. Cadena.
Vice Mayor Mercado, any, any questions for Mr. Cadena?
Not so much for Mr. Cadena, but I had one for Rose. Because John and I were on the subcommittee, and I know we've talked about sending it out to nine firms. And I was just wondering if Rose had gotten any inquiries other than, I know she said we just got the two, but were there any other verbal inquiries or questions from the other seven or eight firms that the proposals were sent out to? Did we get any responses, or these are just the two responses that we totally got?
No, we did. We were able to speak with a couple of other firms, Kim Lee Horn.
Did you speak up?
Oh, oh, sorry, I'm away from my mic. Yes, so there were two other firms that I was able to get a hold of, or got a hold of me in response. One was Kim Lee Horn, and the other was, oh, Willdan. And Willdan's another big firm who's definitely specializes in municipal services. And the response was mainly, they're interested, but they're not in the area. And they don't feel, because of that situation, they would be able to provide us with the service that we would need. So at that point, they elected not to submit a proposal.
Okay, great. That was, that was a question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. Cadena, for taking all this time to study our engineering contracts and to give us your honest opinion. Truly appreciate that. I'm going to bring each of the, each of the applicants up. And that's when Councilmember Sanchez, a good time to ask your question. Our first one will be Jason Fussell with Tetra Tech. If Jason wants to, to give us a few minutes and talk about the seven-step proposal, and then answer any questions, then we'll go to Mr. Edwards.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, we were very excited to have the opportunity to resubmit on this contract. As many of you know, we started this contract without an office in Buellton, and we ended up in a 200 or 150-square-foot room. Then now we've grown into a thousand-square-foot office with three full-time employees here. So we've increased our support and availability to the city over the past couple of years. And I also just really briefly wanted to introduce Aaron Yonker. He is actually, I would be the main point of contact, but he would be the one supporting me to look for the appropriate staff that can be cost-efficient and have the appropriate knowledge base for these projects. And I'll get into the seven-step, where that really plays into. Then also, Tindran Gali, he runs our Santa Maria office, but his background is mainly stormwater compliance. And I know one of the criterias of having, continue to have a good relationship with the Central Coast Water, Regional Water Quality Control Board. So he would play that role in making sure he's our liaison. Now, with regards to the, the, kind of the steps here, you know, this is a system that's worked for us in other on-call projects, and I agree that's a, you know, more on a larger scale size. What we've typically been doing for smaller projects for the inspections is simply sitting down with Rose and putting together a simple letter that says, this is what we're going to be doing, and here's what you should expect for fee-wise upfront. She would have an idea of our budget of what we're anticipating before we do too much work, because we don't want to, different feeling, different objectives on costs and whatnot. So that's, that's, so I would agree on the smaller projects in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. It could certainly be a more simple, simplified method, and not us doing a bunch of research ahead of time so that we fully understand the project before putting a fee together. So we could definitely tailor, it's an approach that has worked with us on larger projects. A couple other things I really wanted to touch on was about the, the references. So what we tried to do without putting too many references on here, and I know Rose knows who I am. I figured the panel would be talking with Rose, and she can vouch for Tetra Tech. So I didn't include Rose, and I guess that was an oversight on my part. Should have included you, Rose, sorry about that. But what I wanted to highlight is the people, we highlighted some on-call projects that we have repeat business over the past 11 years that I've been involved with these clients. The City of Lakewood and City Carson projects, they're complex projects that actually highlight almost all facets of civil engineering, and what could be included on typical municipal services, but all at once. And then with regards to the County of San Luis Obispo, our two client, our two references there. One is, we're doing stormwater recommendations and support with them on training and whatnot. I wanted to hit that. And then the PG&E, with regards to land surveying, is, we're actually doing civil engineering of ADA ramps up with PG&E and the surveying all at once, so bringing two very different disciplines together, and tying it in and making it an efficient project for them. And lastly, on the recommendations, I noticed that, you know, we stated that our rates would increase annually. I'm perfectly fine with that being only a request upon if you have an interest or through the whole five-year cycle as well as I think M&amp;S proposed. So I, I'm really, I appreciate your feedback, Mr. Cadena. I think it was pretty good to hear. And I am even more proud to hear that, you know, we, we came in slightly close with M&amp;S, and it's a good competition, and it's not, they were way out ahead of Tetra Tech. And so I'm really glad that we got the third-party review, and I think it will help the city. As a City of Buellton resident for 13 years now, I really consider the cost-effectiveness of services that our tax dollars are going to. So I appreciate your feedback. And with that, I'm open to any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sanchez, questions?
Have you had, you've been doing some work for the city with Rose on different projects? Has your seven, I didn't understand the seven-step being a, is that something that, and Rose, is there a problem when you try to get something done, and they have to go through a seven-step?
No, well, so keep in mind, as the city manager stated, our, our work for the city has been on the, on the private development inspection, plan check review, stormwater inspections. So really, we haven't gone through a seven-step with her. And we've simply put together what we call cost-price model that shows our hours anticipated for a plan check review. And just to validate that we're within the deposit of the developer, or it's something that maybe we don't need to charge the developer a full deposit based on their plan, their plan check fees at that time. So we haven't done a seven-step process with Rose at this time.
It just seemed like that was something as a deterrent with the, with the recommendations. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions, John, for Tetra Tech?
Just wondering, there's, you have three people here working in Buellton. Because you have worked in Buellton, and you've got the contract. The other thing they were talking about was accessibility. And would you have the same accessibility, I think, Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo? And, uh, local engineers available?
Yeah, so, uh, what I, so a little bit background about myself is I'm a vice president with Tetra Tech and I have offices from the Bay Area down to Irvine. And here on the Central Coast, I, I run the San Luis Obispo and the, uh, Buellton office. Uh, Tim Chingali, he runs the Santa Maria and Santa Barbara office. Between our offices, I think, um, between San Luis Obispo, Buellton, Santa Maria and Santa Barbara, we have about fifty-six employees here locally and we're very efficient at working remotely. So if we have maybe a, a, a water transmission project that I feel would be more efficiently done with someone in Irvine, then that's where we would make the judgment call of having them come up, do a site investigation, but then have the more, uh, seasoned people in that specific, uh, area, uh, perform the work. But with regards to accessibility, we would still be as accessible as we are now. If I'm unavailable to take a call immediately or answer an email from a client or developer or Rose or anyone else, I've got, you know, people like Aaron that can handle it for me at a moment's notice and, um, and get it done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, Councilman Andrusik, any questions for Tetra Tech or Jason Fussell?
No, I, I, I appreciate that we have this on the table and that we're hopefully looking at it with a, with a, um, open mind rather than, you know, just being told, don't worry, we'll take. I, what I hear from people when they heat, when they hear the numbers we're spending for engineering services. Uh, and, and I've heard my co-council members express surprise and, uh, wonderment with the, the size of bills to do the things that we're doing. And I, I just felt that this was an appropriate time to focus on, does this make sense? And I, I appreciate the recommendations of the four, the four selections. But I think what happened the last time when, you know, we, we were assured by MNS that they would, um, be equitable and, and dole out the projects to, you know, to, to, to help Tetra Tech have a position in the community also. And the numbers aren't bearing that out. And I, I think that's, that was, um, I just wouldn't wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and then you got your eyes open. And if you think that that's, we want to continue that format, then I, I think both firms have ample qualifications and, uh, to, to have, you know, to, to have a committee making statements about either, either, um, operation. My, my biggest, my first thing I wrote down when I read everything was, we have never had Tetra Tech only. So, but I'm not saying, let's try Tetra Tech first. And I di- I didn't say that.
And we'll get into that. Uh, Councilmember King, any questions for Jason Fussell?
Uh, no ma'am. He's already answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Mercado, any questions?
Uh, no questions, but, um, thank Jason for, uh, a, a nice contract out there for us to, uh, explore. And, um, uh, he answered the questions I had. I'm good.
Thank you. I, I had just one, one question, Jason. Uh, just, just saying hypothetically that Tetra Tech has awarded the engineer contract for the City of Buellton. What do you think the timeline is gonna be for a transition? MNS has been Buellton City Engineer and done a very good job for twenty-something years. I, I know Jeff Scott, all the number, before incorporation. All that information has, would then have to come over to you. Our next agenda item, we're looking at, uh, the effects of COVID nineteen and, and construction projects in our town and, and the financial hit. What do you, do you have any idea how long it would take to make a transition? And I, I, I don't know that you can do that or that you can give me an idea of the expense of transition costs.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I could answer that at this time. I, I would, I mean, I think it depends on the current projects that MNS is on, working on right now. Um, I, my one recommendation is you allow them to complete the work they're working on so that you're not having to deal with the transition through middle of construction or middle of a design. Uh, I think something along the lines we did for, um, when we came out for the inspections is basically we hit a line in the sand and anything new, Tetra Tech took over. And anything that was ongoing, MNS continued to do. So I guess my thought would be, it could have happened over three months, could happen quicker. But, um, definitely, but that would be one recommendation. So it's more seamless and not have a hiccup in the middle of a design where it would incur more costs.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's get Jeff Edwards up. He can, he can, uh, give us a talk and then answer questions and then we'll go to public comment. Jeff, welcome.
Welcome. Good to see everyone. Hopefully everybody's healthy, happy and, uh, getting through this thing unscathed. We've gone through this, uh, as recently as last September. So there's no reason after twenty-eight years to go down the road of what MNS can, cannot do for you. It's, um, some of the comments that are made, maybe not too spot-on, no time where we ever asked to divvy up work. Um, it's just, it, it's apples and oranges. Originally, they were brought in to do private development and inspection. And the council wanted to, uh, increase their workload. So my recommendation was, you know, well, maybe we look at water and wastewater. Uh, they're very good at what they do in that world. And so that occurred and don't, since that's an enterprise fund, it's, it's, there's never a whole lot that goes on in, in that particular world. Um, I do, if the council does go down this road, I do have another idea that, that I could introduce if they so desire. But you'd have to, you, we'd have to go down that road. Backing up, we have the, uh, uh, Mr., Mr. Yankee is texting me feverishly here because he, he lives only a couple of miles from it and he just lost his power. So I don't know if we're gonna have him or not. He seems to be gone, but that's okay. Um, unfortunately, power does go out on all of us. Here again, once again, every year we go before a council in Buellton and seen every single council. There's a budget that's presented and in that budget, it says how much dollars is gonna be spent in that particular year. And there's line items, what we want to accomplish. And in every case, we've never exceeded our budget. Simply put, it's almost unheard of. Um, we've never gone back and stood in front of a council and asked for more money. It's never happened. Now, taking that into consideration, let's go to construction. We do the same type without the, without the words, without the seven steps or anything else like that. We, we basically turn in proposals, even though we're under, under contract. And we work out of twelve different contracts to do various things for everything that we do. Once a year progresses, we turn in a proposal. And when we go to many of them and before you guys. So let's take for instance, the median. You knew how much we had turned in a proposal and how much that whole thing was gonna cost. And we spent a year and, in, uh, studies and committees and getting that thing off the ground. And the same thing with Sycamore. And I'm only using recent ones that we can actually see out there now. But it's gone on for years and years. So, A, we've, we've never been asked to divvy out, give work to another company. I don't, you don't have a problem with that. And there are simple things that we can do to remedy that. Uh, I just wanna make that perfectly clear. Here again, we have, uh, the grant writing. We're, we're, we're feverishly helping a lot of our cities right now because of the bid, um, obtain money. That's, that's, that's out there. And, uh, Buellton's one. We didn't even, we didn't budget for the work. But I run budget worksheets. Most of you have taken the time to come over and see and see how they work. And in, in doing so, we, but it's simply put, it's okay. If we're fifty percent of the year and we've spent thirty-seven percent of the dollars that are in the year, we have some wiggle room. So let's put the grant writing in there. Wasn't part of the yearly budget, but we have a place, we could put it in there. Now, we're presently trying to get some money for some, um, some extensive roadwork that's coming up through the state. And our grant writers are, you know, just doing it off, off of that. We haven't, it, it's the simplest part of having an on-call is to be able to just say, Jeff, can you make this happen? Can we fit it somewhere in our existing budget so we don't have to go ask for more money? And of course, there's always a way to find money that's in existence. Now, having said that, I'm emphasizing again that we've never gone back. So having not gone back, we've only done what's been asked of us and been approved on a yearly basis. I don't know any other way to put that. Simply put, uh, we take great pride in what we do. We do it for a lot of communities, just like Jason. I run, uh, have a lot of cities and are, we have a division that's called Government Services Division, which I'm the head of. All we do is work for cities and counties. I don't wanna leave counties out. And three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's, that's what we do. We don't spin off, we're not, we do any other things than to work for cities. So we know how cities work. I'll, I'll touch on one subject that we may wanna actually take into consideration. And I'm only saying this because I'm looking after the city like we always do. But the transition costs are gonna be enormous. I, I've been in this business for thirty years. I've seen it happen before. I've replaced other companies. It is, isn't one thing that, that you can say that, well, we could come in and just take over. I mean, it's, it's a massive, massive amount of money that's gonna occur just to get up to speed. Having said that, it's, it's just one of those things that you, you wanna probably take into consideration. And then finally, like I said, if you, if we need to work on a way to divert our, our, our divvy up work. Yeah, I have, I have thoughts. I've, I've, I've said them today and, and they're not on the list, but it'd be a simple thing to do. And if somebody wants to know what that is, then feel free to ask. But you know me, you know our company, you know, we're very fiscally responsible. And, uh, I will defend that fiscal responsibility to my, to the nth degree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Let's see, I'm gonna go backwards this time. Vice Mayor Mercado, any questions for Jeff at MNS?
Uh, no, not at this time. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember King?
No ma'am.
Councilmember Sanchez, questions?
No.
No questions?
I just, my question, uh, accessibility. I think that it, that Jason would be as, as accessible to, um, with his company doing, uh, county and city work as well. I don't know, uh, my MNS, where, does better work with cities and counties than Tetra Tech or not? It made it sound like that, but, uh, just, that was my comment.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Andrusik, any questions for Mr. Edwards?
No. I appreciated that Jeff, Jeff has always stepped up with the, with the open mind and willing to find a new alternative. I'm strictly looking at what the citizens are paying for the services we're getting. That's, that, that's, that's the only reason this is before us. And it, and Jeff is always willing to, every, every time, this is about the fourth time we've had this. And he says, we will do whatever you want us to do. So I, I, I can't ask for any more than that from someone. So Jeff, my, my, my thank yous are, are out there for you. But the, the, the bottom line after thirty-six months is, is, is before you. And if, if that seems okay with everybody, then, um, I'm, I may be, um, may be in the wrong tree.
Okay. Um, okay, so if questions are done, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Do we have any, any comments from the public on this one, Linda?
No ma'am.
Okay, then I'm gonna bring it back to council for discussion, possible, uh, uh, motion. Before we get into that though, I, I do wanna say one thing. I, uh, you know, we, we had, uh, MNS has been with the City of Buellton forever. And it's important to put out RFPs on occasion to find out if the city is getting the best that it possibly could be getting. I've had, uh, a couple of questions with the finances. I sign a lot of checks. MNS gets, uh, a lot of money, uh, from city business. But every time I tried to talk to Jeff about it, he's always been very open. I just wanna get this out there. Jeff has always been willing to sit down and talk to me about any questions I have. Recently, I, I've been signing a lot of checks and median two is mentioned. So I went to our finance director, asked her to, uh, we had approved an expenditure of a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred thousand for medium two planning. I asked Chanel to pull the final planning costs that MNS charged us and it was a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, I asked her about, uh, the Highway two forty-six, Sycamore. And MNS is right in there where they're supposed to be. And not only that, but they've applied for a grant that we're hoping will fund most of the project there. The, uh, Councilmember Andrusik's, uh, comparison of two million fifteen, one fifty-six for three years to MNS versus three seventy, three hundred and seventy-five thousand for three years to Tetra Tech really is apples and oranges because Tetra Tech has been on the commercial side and MNS is on the city side. And they are nothing, they are, they are two totally separate issues. Uh, the other one I wanna say is with our stormwater and Mary Zepeda, who is the, uh, I, the, the, the agony of a lot of developers for checking their, their drains. And, uh, the, the City of Buellton has saved a lot of money because, uh, MNS takes care of solving as well as Buellton. So our stormwater costs are cut almost in half because of the joint use of the stormwater. Tetra Tech, I, you know, I'm gonna go with whatever direction council wants to go at with this because we are dealing with two incredibly good companies. The City of Buellton cannot go wrong with either one of them. But, um, I, I just, you know, Tetra Tech has done a great job for the city. It's nice to have, uh, the, the operator living in town. Although Jeff Edwards is twenty minutes down the road, not too far away. And, um, both companies are incredibly reputable and the City of Buellton can do no wrong. So with that, I just wanted to clarify, um, that, that, you know, you, we've, we've got two really good companies. I, I do sign a lot of checks. Uh, the City of Buellton is very busy. We're doing a lot of things for our community and Tetra, or MNS is the city engineer. So, um, you know, they're, they're gonna get the brunt. They're gonna get the majority of the work. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over. I guess I'm going to go, let's see. Uh, I'm going backwards again. Vice Mayor Mercado, any thoughts, any comments, any final questions?
Uh, comments? Um, uh, I read both proposals over two or three days. Um, I'm, I'm, a, a point of contention with Mr. Cadena is on his, uh, task order approach. Uh, he thought that was too cumbersome. But after, you know, when looking at it, uh, uh, I, I think that's in our, the city's best interest to focus on certain aspects and to have, uh, Jason be the front man, Jeff is the front man, or Ken is the front man for MNS. We know who that is. So that's kind of a moot question, but I, I like their approach in that. They're both worldwide firms. Tetra Tech a little bit more, uh, bigger that way. But having, uh, the abilities to get the best person for the best job at that certain point. I, I thought that was what his seven, uh, task approach was, was working toward. So I I thought that was a an overall plus for me, which uh the consultant thought it it was against. Um, I I I think uh Jason answered the the question on the twenty to thirty thousand little simple things. Everybody can make it simple. Um, but having trained uh or started eight horses that win the Triple Crowns, you have a a a system that works. And you go through that, and that's why those horses were placed where they were. And each horse is an individual, but he tells you what he wants you to do. And so I think that's where our in uh city engineer Rose is the one to to direct. Uh, I think she would get along with Tetra Tech. Like um Holly said, maybe now's the time we got some new projects coming on. We did go in a different direction. I I both of them, I think, Jeff, I have not um had a lot of dealings with them, but I in my short term here. Uh, I think both firms have done an outstanding job, and I want to thank both of them for pu- uh putting out proposals. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember King?
Uh, no questions or comments at this time.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Sanchez?
Good, um, I'd like to agree with Art on the, I think it's time for a change to get somebody new in to uh and make things that aren't as accessible. Um, I've always been professed that we're spending too much on engineers or uh, I see the engineering where I think things that should be handled by the city staff. And that's my view on it, and I I'd like to see, I think that Jason could do as good a job as Jeff and as as far as uh everything, once they got to know each other, you know, once they got in, Jason's, you know, I haven't heard any problems with him. I'd like to see a change right now, and I'd like to to uh see it uh go to a different in a little bit different direction than being so handy. Uh, that's my view.
Councilmember Andrusik, your comments, thoughts, final questions?
I I see, I I really appreciate everyone opening up and and dealing with the situation. I know that we, you know, we are, you you haven't heard from the citizens yet because these kind of numbers really aren't, they're they're over their head, you know. We're going to be looking down the barrel of rate increases just because of the operating costs. And I think that we owe it to them to get the sharpest pencil out. And I'm encouraged that there is at least another council member that thinks it would be appropriate to have a change. You know, we have changed, we have had new managers, we've had new department heads. And it it's not, it's not always nice, and it's not, I just, I just think that uh it it would be appropriate to make a change somehow, somehow incorporating what's going to work with um. You know, we we've got recommendations, but that's a staff report. We are the city council. And I'm telling you, if when I talk to people and they hear how much money we're spending on engineering, their eyes just glaze over. So I I think I owe it to the citizens to support making a change somehow. And and nobody stepping up saying, well, well, we'll do this or we'll do that. You know, last time we had the, you know, we were trying to get Tetra Tech more involved, but that isn't, that isn't, hasn't been working. And M and S is very big, and I, you know, I see them, the 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 projects that they do, their trucks are everywhere. But I'm confident that Tetra Tech can handle any kind of volume that we would have here in Buellton. And that's the reason I would in um would favor us making a change at this juncture, so.
Okay, so uh, I know a motion hasn't been made, and I appreciate that because this is a really big decision. And and I I'm getting a feel of the direction of council. Is council uh willing to discuss options with the change? Say with uh asking if M and S is willing to continue stormwater? Uh, if if M and S is willing to make the transition after all this time with the city of Buellton easier by perhaps completing the projects that have already been started? I I don't know, uh, Mr. Wolf, do we need, I I or I guess Greg? What does the council need to make a decision tonight as to what they're going to do? Do we need to um come back, uh, get the ad hoc committee together, see what uh you know, the if there's anything M and S can continue to either complete or continue on a regular basis?
I would think it just, a lot of it's going to depend on the direction the city council wants to go. If the if the city council wants to go in the direction of a a of of naming um or giving the contract exclusively to Tetra Tech, then we need to discuss a a transition plan. If the if the city council wants to go in the direction of a different division of work product between the two firms, then again, we'll need to sit down. If that's the direction the city council wants to go, I would think that a a a series of meetings involving both firms, along with the city engineer and um probably myself, and the city council ad hoc committee on this issue would be appropriate to sit down and kind of decide how that work product might be divided. But uh, before we know which way to go, we kind of need some some at least general direction from the city council as to which way you're leaning on this.
Okay.
And and Madam Mayor, if I might, I I want to say that we have witnessed a new paradigm shift, so to speak, in a manager that is speaking. He 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 doesn't hold back. He gives us the good news and the bad news. And I, for that, I'm I'm thankful that we have a city manager that will speak to us instead of just shrug his shoulders and say, well, you can do whatever you want to do, and that's 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 not management. So I'm 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 feeling better that everyone's in the kind of in the same vein, including our our two um engineering engineering firms. There has to be that that there. I think I think there's a good compromise coming out of all of this, but I don't have any problem with, if you want to say, okay, we've done for thirty-five years, M and S has been the mainstay here, and we wanted, if you say, if if I don't have a problem saying, let's give a three or a five year, but not a six month or a one year term for some kind of a transition, because that would be a a monumental task. And and I think it it would be very um very hard to to shift gears and still accept the the things that are we've got coming down the pike with the development of the Avenue of Flags and the um and all of the other projects that, you know, seem to be lurking in the in the distant distance. So I'm 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 just, I thank you for having it on the table for discussion and and you you may, you know, I think I think maybe our city manager could offer a um he's 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 been down this road with different organizations and 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 he's not, you know, we're not in a situation where something has gone wrong. It's just there's a trend that needs to be um, I I've I felt for some time, needs to be fabricated. And I would uh, it's it seems like we've got um a willingness by the council working towards that for the benefit of the community.
Okay, so is there a motion out there then, gentlemen?
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is uh Councilmember King. I move that we direct the uh city manager to make an exclusive contract for all engineering services for the city of Buellton to Tetra Tech for a five-year or a three-year option.
I believe this was a three-year, wasn't it, city manager?
Three-year with uh with two one-year options, I believe, is the.
Yeah, so it's a three-year.
So noted, and that will be my motion.
Would you be willing to?
And that would be a five-year and I.
That would be a three-year with two one-year options to extend it to a five-year.
Then I amend that to a three-year to a two-year extension, so two one-year extensions.
Are you willing to uh get the ad hoc committee together to discuss the possibility of having M and S in cost-saving measures, complete the projects that have already been started so that the city will save some money?
Uh, and I will make that amendment my option, that M and S complete all of their existing um contracts.
Thank you. Uh, stormwater?
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
Is that uh stormwater on the table at all?
No.
No.
Okay, so, did you get that, Linda?
I got it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember King?
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik?
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Mercado?
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra?
Hi. Uh, I just want to thank M and S for the many, many, many years of quality service that the city of Buellton received from from their company and their staff. And congratulations, Tetra Tech, Jason. Looks like we've got a new engineering service.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alrighty, uh, moving on. Come on, where's my, where is my?
Number ten.
Somebody help me out. We're going into budget now. Where's all my pages?
Um, two 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 sixty-four, I think, or two.
I know, I have pictures. I set it down. Uh, city manager.
Mid-cycle budget.
Oh, here we go. Thank you.
Agenda item ten.
Related to fiscal year, yes. Go go ahead.
Madam Mayor, city council members, uh, before you tonight is the mid-cycle budget related to fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one and estimated COVID-nineteen financial impacts. On May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, the city council adopted a two-year operating and capital budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. The adopted budget for all funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one totaled fifteen million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-five. The proposed budget before you shows an increase to twenty million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, which includes all operating transfers and capital improvement projects. Um, in addition, as part of tonight's report, uh, we'll be going over uh COVID-nineteen financial impacts. Any of the the budget amendments proposed tonight, any of the budget figures, any uh priorities and goals that you see are all subject to change after tonight's discussion. City council can decide to add um goals, priorities, um, change any budget numbers, defer or postpone any capital projects. Um, so it's all up to city council. I'll go ahead and give you all the information that you need. So when we began this budget process, uh, we've had to do several uh, since we were began last year. Uh, due to COVID-nineteen, we've had to um adjust our revenues in particular. Um, so I'll start with the background on the COVID-nineteen financial impacts. So on March nineteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Gavin Newsom declared a stay-at-home order. As a result of this, only essential businesses remained open and non-essential businesses closed. And for the city of Buellton, uh, that was, the hotels were a big one. And in addition to that, over thirty-six point five million Americans have lost their jobs, so they have now filed unemployment. So what that means is there's a lot of people right now, uh, you know, in our community, in in the country that do not have spendable income. So for the economy, especially for governments, what that means is that there's consumers out there then that they might not have the the money for leisure expenses. They might not go out traveling. Um, they might not be staying in hotels. Our top three categories for sales tax is fuel and service stations, auto and transportation, restaurants and hotels. And on your staff report, I showed um projections from HDL. Uh, these were given to me in late April. So our fuel and service station is expected to go down eighteen point one percent for this current fiscal year, two thousand nineteen twenty. And then for the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one, that percent is thirteen percent decrease. And you can already see it as you drive around town, the gas prices are below three dollars. Autos and transportation, that's expected to go down this current fiscal year, two thousand nineteen twenty, about twenty-one, twenty-four point one percent. Again, because now there's not enough people out there that are going and buying autos. And a little optimistic view that HDL had is for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one, that will go up one point two percent. And then our third category, restaurants and hotels, sales tax revenue is expected to go down twenty point three percent this fiscal year and nine point three percent the following fiscal year. Um, not only has our sales tax revenue been affected, but as I mentioned, T O T. After the stay-at-home order, um, I had staff reach out to hotels and kind of ask what their estimates occupancy rates were. But we found this last, for April, uh, they were, a lot of them were down by a lot. So April was about less than fifty percent loss or in occupancy rates. Um, and in addition to that, uh, the rec center was forced to close, so we don't have any uh revenue from the Buellton programs. There was no spring break camp, no um trips as well. So revenue from that went down. And stock the stock market has also been hit. So our last life interest was really low. I don't remember the sack figure, but it was less than half of what we normally get. So not only will will the low interest rates affect our earnings income, but it's also going to affect CalPERS. Uh, it usually takes two years for the CalPERS valuation to come out. So any losses that CalPERS um has as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, we won't see it until fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So there's still some that what that what that means is it gives the city some time to plan. But if interest rates are either negative or really low for CalPERS, we can expect um higher contributions in the future. And in addition to that, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about uh property taxes. Because of the nature of property taxes, anything that was on the tax rule January first, twenty twenty, uh, we're going to receive in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So there's not going to be any revenue loss, and I believe there's actually an increase in the budget. And that's due to the fact that the townhomes that were added to, any townhomes that were that were constructed by January first, twenty twenty, were added to the tax rule. But the only, the financial impact of those property taxes is more of a cash flow issue. We receive that money in December and April. So during the first fis- the first half of the fiscal year, we're always seeing expenditures over revenues until that money comes in. That's when it flips. So that's the only issue right now. So if we don't see the exact uh sales tax revenue, um, T O T revenue, then, you know, we have to make sure we have money in the bank and reserves to pay for all those expenditures that go out in the first half of the year. Um, and as far as uh overall revenue loss for fiscal overall revenue loss for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one is about a seven point nine percent revenue loss, about six hundred and sixty-five thousand. And that's with the assumption from HDL and a conservative estimate that T O T, originally we had budgeted two point nine million and my new projections are two point five. And with all these revenue projections, it's kind of, it's uncertain. Um, a lot of the webinars that I've attended say this changes right now on a weekly basis, and it's all dependent on human behavior, because we cannot predict what people are going to feel comfortable doing, if they're going to go out to hotels, if they're going to feel comfortable going to the store and shop. And it's, it also just depends on how fast the economy opens up. Uh, so these are just, uh, few things that we have to keep in mind when, um, when working on the budget, that all departments have tried to save money where they could. Um, as I'll go through every department, I'll kind of explain significant expenditures. Overall, the operating budget went up five point five percent. But as you can see on, uh, table three on the staff report, overall, uh, from the adopted twenty twenty, twenty-one budget to the proposed budget, we're looking at a three point four million dollar increase or a hundred and fifty, one point five percent. The majority of the increases are all, um, rollovers from capital improvement projects. So again, we'll go over this in detail as I go through the budget. Uh, more specifically, capital improvement projects where council will have a chance to go through every project and prioritize.
Chanel, is it okay, is it okay if we interrupt you with questions as we go along?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
I just have, I was wondering if you could just, when you say tables, can you just give us a page number?
Uh, page two sixty-seven.
Thank you, just so, just so I know, just to see, thank you.
So.
What was the number?
Uh, page two hundred sixty-seven.
Six, seven, okay. It sounded like you said fifty-seven, okay.
Yeah, two hundred sixty-seven. So that table just gives you a summary of all the departments. And I'll go ahead and do all the, uh, departments individually and I'll explain the differences. And so if you flip your page on page two sixty-eight, the overall general fund balance or general reserve is about seven point ninety-five million of cash reserves. Um, operating revenue is about seven point seven million, operating expenditure, seven point five million. So we have an operating surplus of, a little bit over two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so we're so, so we're still looking good as far as operating. Uh, the majority of the loss of the, of the fund balance that you'll see is all due to those capital improvement projects. So at least we know we're still in the black operating. Um, and then the sewer fund revenue, the sewer and water funds are both going to be in the negative as far as operating. Um, it's not, not that much as previous years, but with the sales revenue decrease because of the hotels, they had, they usually have a lot of, um, water usage because of, of the people, you know, the people staying there and with the last few months, they've really had no customer, so they haven't had to use water. Um.
So when you show us our T O T losses, that one point three four million really doesn't include the, uh, water, does it? Water and sewer?
No, T O T, that loss is just on the T O T revenue that we receive.
Okay.
And so what I added in, in the budget this, this year and I'll, and it's part of long-term planning, which we should include every year in the budget. So I'll skip over the budget summary, so you can skip over to page wait, hold on. Two hundred eighty-eight. So, so here I have provided a five-year forecast for the general fund. So this is the summary of all the operating revenue, operating expenditures, and then your net revenue and other financing sources, which is the transfer for capital. And so you can see there that at, at the end of the fi- or by the third year, we're still in the black. And then starting fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, then we start seeing a deficit. And with those assumptions, there are uh, the, so you can see the percentages there, employee services. Um, they're all based off of, um, step levels, uh, assumption of a two percent COLA, operating maintenance, kind of has a three point four percent operating increases consistently. Um, and then what I added was CalPERS unfunded accrued liability, just so it'd be, could be transparent on the effect it has on the operating budget. So you can see that, um, every year that payment is going to go up. Um, and again, like I mentioned, depending on the CalPERS valuation report, that third year can change, it could potentially be higher.
Now Chanel?
Mm-hmm.
Weren't we on an accelerated payment plan for CalPERS?
It was not an official accelerated plan, so this is the first fiscal year where it turned, or it becomes a twenty. So the payment that we're going to pay fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one is already the twenty-year amount. Now, we have the option of paying a fifteen or ten-year amount. But in the prior years, it was thirty, but we were paying the twenty-year amount.
Correct. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so this kind of gives us a big picture on, this is what, you know, the proposed looks like now, but in the next five years, this is how, what our financial situation is going to be. And this is more for discussion purposes and for us really, for, for planning for the future. And then the next page is just goes into detail of all the categories that you saw on the first page. So unless you have any questions on that, I can skip over. So just let me know.
Well, you know me, I, I tagged almost every page and, and honestly, it's pretty petty and stuff. Um, I had a long day today.
Give us a legal paper.
You know, I, I mean, I, I'm looking at the Buellton rec program and I, I truly, I do have to say, I truly appreciate your five-year forecast. I, I, it's, it's, uh, not, not the numbers I want to see, but I think it's the first time you've ever done a five-year forecast into the future. And, uh, I truly do appreciate it. Uh, we're going to have, we're going to have to do something. We've got a beautiful town and we've never, I don't remember going into a deficit like this before.
Yeah, and then again, that's all of the assumptions of slow recovery from COVID-nineteen. Things can look better, but at this point, we don't know. Um.
Well, better, better to look at the worst and get excited about it.
Yes.
Thank you Chanel.
You're welcome.
Okay, so go ahead, go on, unless anybody's got questions.
Okay, and then again, the next one is just the detail on the expenditures from the fund summary page we just saw. Okay, so now we're at page two ninety-two, which is city council. So the top portion is just the summary, and you can see there was only a tiny increase in your budget. Um,
How, how did our salaries go up?
Those pencils.
No, Linda's, it is a thirty percent city council and the rest is city clerk, human resources for allocation.
Where it says council salaries?
Oh, city council salaries? No, that's.
It went from twenty-four, two to twenty-six, four. Council never voted an increase in our salaries?
No, that, that's the same. So if you look at the following page, uh, line fif- five hundred twenty, it's, this council salaries is twenty-six thousand, four hundred.
Right, but it went up, it went up in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty. Which is what's on that page. Eighteen nineteen, it was only twenty-four, two.
That's because there, there wasn't a full council.
Ah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Never mind, never mind.
Um, so the only addition to the city council's budget was, uh, budgeting for an extra laptop for council.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you look over the.
We, we could get rid of, we could turn mine in. I don't use mine. We could turn that in and use that laptop for anybody who needs it.
Um, extra savings there, definitely.
Yeah.
Um, so, so looking at the accomplishments for this fiscal year, um, so far, we've adopted a strictly balanced budget. Um, we know we've continued to adopt ordinances and resolutions. Uh, construction on Minion Two and Avenue of Flags has begun. Uh, we, city council created the arts and culture committee and has funded several projects. And then looking at the eight goals, the city council, uh, direct staff to create in the budget process was maintain a balanced budget, support and fund trails and bike paths, continue to support economic development, implement the vision plan, sound planning and development, emergency preparedness, maintain infrastructure and sustainability, and eight promote arts and culture. Um, and, and you guys can add any that you want to see or remove any. Um, and then the objectives associated with the goals are right below. Um, so end fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one within budget. Uh, continue to allocate money to the bike trails, trail reserve, complete Minion Two on Avenue of Flags, update circulation element, improve Highway two forty-six safety, adopt a complete streets plan, acquire a generator for city hall, continue to provide cert classes, research emergency lights and generators, provide lighting on Industrial Way and Central Avenue, maintain the landscape rebate program, review drought tolerant landscape standards and create an arts and culture committee. Do you guys have any changes to those?
Oh, we've completed M, so everything else we are still working on, but M is already completed as an adjective.
Right.
And then we'll go ahead and move over now to four oh two, which is the city manager. Uh, this one had a ten, a little over ten percent increase, and the majority of the increase was to reflect the salary and benefits of the city manager according to their approved contract last year.
Uh, Chanel, what page are we on?
Uh, two ninety-six.
Alright.
Um, and the.
I don't go over the published ones. No tags on that one, city clerk or the attorney?
Okay, well then we'll just move on. There was no changes to the city attorney budget. And so page three oh one has city clerk and human resources. Uh, this one had a slight increase, uh, most of the increase was due to the three percent cost of living adjustment.
Yeah.
And there is an addition here and is, was just proposed of hiring a part-time employee to scan orders, ordinances and resolutions and, you know, just scanning, uh, those legal documents. Um, the estimate's five thousand dollars, um, it's up to city council what, whether or not they want to fund that. We just added it in here to put it, uh, put it out on the table.
Would, would you consider a student, a, a, you know, a college student, uh, maybe as an extra credit for their vocation? That might save you money and get the job done.
Uh, yeah, we could look into that as well.
Um, how many hours, how many hours are you looking at? You've got a retired, uh, mayor.
Oh, Linda, can you answer that?
I'm not sure how many hours. We allocated five thousand. Most people don't work for free, so that was minimum wage, which is thirteen.
Your mayor's, your mayor's pretty cheap. She's, she's already on salary.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to come up with anything I can come up with.
We can certainly push this, you know, we can push it to the next year and that's, that's not a problem. Um, anytime anybody wants, anything, I can put my hands on it and pretty fast, so.
It is, it is pretty, it is pretty minor. I get that five thousand.
Yeah, but we don't have to do it this year. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if you guys need something, I can certainly put my hands on it within minutes or seconds and get it to you, so, um, if you want to push this to next year, that's, that's okay too. Feel free.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you Linda.
If you want to keep that item there or remove it?
Gentlemen, your pleasure.
I would suggest just keeping it in there. They need the help, they can get it for five thousand bucks, but not that you couldn't do it.
Okay.
They asked for it, it's important to get it, get it done.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a small amount, it's being efficient.
It is a small amount.
I agree with that.
Okay.
That one sticks. Jason.
You have, you have consensus.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to the next department, which is city attorney, so no change there.
No change.
And then four, four hundred ten, the non-departmental, which starts at three oh eight. Uh, that, that's the one where has a huge increase. Um, this is where we record the capital improvement project transfers. Um, so the first, I just wanted to mention this, the first line item for medical benefit, that's for retirees. So you can see that that went up uh, quite a bit from the originally adopted budget. Um, that is because we had more retirees last fiscal year that applied for medical through CalPERS. So now, as you know, as more people retire, that cost there is going to keep increasing.
Okay.
Yep.
Um.
I did, I did have a question Chanel, on your contract services. We went from four thousand eighty to twenty-two, eight seventy for char- includes dues for drinking water and charge point electric charging station?
Um, let's see here.
That was on page three eleven.
Hmm.
Okay, let me get the information on that. Because I believe that was for a new contract. Let me switch over.
You said three eleven?
Page three eleven. And it's, uh, it's the six zero eight zero zero. It's almost down at the bottom. It's three up from the bottom.
Contract services, okay. Oh, I see it, yeah. Proposed, wow. Yeah, from four to forty, forty eighty and then to twenty-two, eight seventy, wow.
Yeah.
But that may be, you know, that could be retirement obligations, um, Chanel, I, I mean, some of the things.
Drinking, drinking water?
Yeah, it's our.
Well, no, I did, okay, I'm sorry. I, okay. It's just, it's, it's a huge percentage quadrupling.
Oh, okay, so what that is is the, the drinking water is for staff, but that's very minimal at about fifteen hundred. But the huge increase is a, a rollover from the satisfaction survey from True North Research. So that didn't happen this fiscal year, so it's getting pushed back one year. So about nineteen thousand, two hundred is being rolled over.
And actually, Madam Mayor, I can clarify that a little bit. We can probably push, we can actually, there's no probably about it. We can push that into the following fiscal year beyond this because we will likely not revisit that until twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can remove that, then that, that goes back to par. So, um, I will remove nineteen thousand, two hundred from those contract services.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. There was a savings in the insurance liability from eighty-one thousand, six hundred, sixty thousand. That was based on the new invoice that came into the city a few weeks ago.
And then. That's wonderful.
Hey Chanel, can I interrupt a second, Madam?
Yes, go ahead.
On, uh, page three eleven on that six zero nine zero zero, the miscellaneous. What, why did that go down roughly a thousand six hundred dollars? On that, it says reflect costs of banking, drinking services, green business programs, miscellaneous purchases.
That was, that, I think that was based on the trend.
Okay.
We're not, we're not complaining when they go down, Dave.
No, 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 I just wonder why it did. I mean, you know, I mean, if it's a, it's eleven-five, eleven-seven, and then goes to ten, ten-one. I just wondered why it was on a downward trend.
Trend setting.
Right, okay, perfect.
No, I, I, the li- insurance liability Chanel is wonderful to drop that one. Yeah, that was great.
And then the next one that we, that we are gonna drop is Visitors' Bureau, so you see four hundred and fifty thousand. But after tonight's discussion, um, they said between sixty to eighty is a rollover, but I'll go ahead and deduct sixty thousand from the amount to three ninety thousand.
Wonderful.
And seven, seven zero 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 has five point one nine eight million dollars. Yeah, that transfers for CIP, um, the detail is on page three thirteen, but I would wait to discuss this until we get to the capital improvement project.
You know something we don't know?
So I will go ahead and go over to four twenty finance. Uh, the ma- the majority of the increase here was in salaries. Um, I reduced just a little bit where I could, like miscellaneous applies and.
Page?
You know, finance looked great, public safety was fine, libraries fine. I think, yeah.
Chanel, what page are we on?
Uh, we'll skip over to page three twenty-six, recreation department. Um, so again, the majority of the increase here was the, uh, cost of living adjustment. And the addition of the arts and culture committee was not budgeted for in the original budget.
Now, I just had a petty question. I, I, not petty, just a, a kind of a, I don't understand it. We've always had the, uh, rec fifty-fifty with solving. And it's only been, you know, a few thousand. We were hoping to get, uh, we, we split money with them. And we, it was adopted at sixty-one twenty and now it's at nothing. Are we not doing fifty-fifty resolving anymore?
That is conservative because we don't know at this point. Uh, just like our revenue was zero, we budgeted expenditure zero. Um, yeah, because when we were doing the, uh, budget proposals, that was to be determined. So we just figured, if we just do zero, that's more conservative since we don't know the answer right now.
But that's expenses, right?
Yeah, that's expenses. So usually.
Which line item is it?
Uh, six, seven, five, seven, zero, the last one in operating.
So it's not, okay, I, I trust you. I just say, I've never seen it zero before.
And then we'll go ahead and move to the next department, streetlights, uh, no change. Well, the only change there is that it was, uh, brought down to sixty-five thousand. The original was a two percent increase. So the following storm water, that was no change.
Yeah, no problems there.
And public works park, so this one had a twelve point ninety-eight percent increase. Uh, this is due to the fact that the city now owns Village Park. So at the time that the budget was adopted, the maintenance cost and landscaping was not included. So, yeah, yeah, the increase was just adding that, those costs into there. Uh, the landscape maintenance, again, this one, uh, decreased just because it was removing two percent increases from the prior year.
That's good.
And then public works general, so. Yeah, so this one had nothing significant, it was just the co- coles. And then the next one is planning. So this one had a nineteen point sixty-five percent increase. So the increases was in contract services. And this is because there's a rollover of about a hundred and fifty thousand for the land used in circulation element. Uh, the contract was awarded last council meeting, I believe. Uh, but not all the work is gonna be done this fiscal year, so we're rolling over a hundred and fifty thousand. And that's considered.
Page is that on?
Uh, three hundred forty-eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we're adding eighteen hundred for computer equipment for one of the Windows ten's upgrade.
And the copier went up about two thousand dollars as well, the copier rental?
Yeah, so this is for, uh, a rent of a copier machine at the planning department.
Yeah, I'm just curious how it's gone from fifty-eight hundred, then it goes down to sixty-one to fifty-seven, sixty-two, up to eight thousand.
So if, if you don't mind, I can go ahead and chime in on that. So that was just put in there. Um, so it's a scanner, we have a lot of old microfiche films from back when, uh, the county, we incorporated before and before when we were, uh, the county. Um, and so there's a lot of old films that we have this really old machine that's basically does, does not work. And so the goal of renting that machine, we've met with the, the company that would be providing it and they've given us a quote. I believe it was somewhere around nineteen hundred dollars, um, for that rental for one year to allow staff to convert all of that microfilm into PDF format, so it's more accessible. Um, and, yeah, provide those copies to the public.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions on any item, just let me know.
Is that a, a, a piece of equipment that, um, you think that after a year it would go back into our, you would need it a second year or?
Um, no, so the idea is that we, um, so, you know, we don't, we're not producing any more microfilm or anything. It's just basically how they used to hold a lot of records and so.
Right.
It's a carryover from the county. So once we, you know, if we have it for a year, that should be more than enough time to, for staff to, you know, over, over that period of time um, convert all of those films into PDFs and then we won't need the, the machine anymore.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Chanel?
Yes.
Um, could you go back to page three, four, eight? And line items six zero eight zero zero on contract services. It's kind of fluctuates like excessively. What, can you explain that line? It was one away, ninety-four, two ninety-six, ninety-seven, one fifty-two, and now, uh, two thirty-four.
Um, so those are Cosmont and Irma.
So that's the, that's the contracts we awarded to Co- Cosmont.
Yeah, it's Cosmont and, uh, Metro Ventures.
Okay, okay, yeah, we agreed to that, thank you.
And the circulation study. Yeah, Metro Ventures.
Okay, so then that's all of general funds. And so now we're looking at enterprise funds. So page three fifty-three is the detail. Uh, majority of the increase here, you can see some salaries or employee services. Um, like similar with the, uh, non-departmental, the insurance liability brought that down to what the invoice was. As there was a little bit of savings there.
Wonderful.
This, uh, so.
Did you say three seventy-three?
Yes, or three fifty-three.
Oh, three fifty-three, I'm in seventy.
Yes, go ahead.
On that line, uh, on three fifty-three on five zero zero three zero, that hourly employees. Now, we're, you were intending on hiring somebody to do that with that, go onto that line?
Yes, so we wanted to hire somebody, um, like part-time or temporary, it would go in the hourly employees.
Right, okay, and what was your budget for that? You said five K?
Uh, no, not in sewer, but in, uh, general, it was five thousand.
Okay, got you, okay.
Okay, so.
And at the bottom, the sixty-nine, one hundred, the transfer to other funds, we're gonna hold off on that one?
Yeah, we'll hold off on that one for capital.
And if, if Rose, I'm sure, I'm sure it's something that we really need, but, uh, we've added, we had nothing in equipment for the twenty twenty-one adopted and now we're proposing an extra twenty-five thousand. What, what is that?
Right, usually I keep, I, I do budget every year for any equipment that may break or needs to be replaced in that year. I think it was an oversight to my part that I left the twenty twenty-one zero um, when we did the budget originally.
Okay. So that's kind of like emergency funding for broken equipment?
Yes.
It's not a piece of pro- equipment we're buying then, just, just a, uh, emergency fund?
Voice card?
Yes, if we, if, if something breaks, that's, um, that's a large expenditure uh, for the lab or for the wastewater plant or for like the jetter or whatever. Um, then that would come from that line item.
And it looks like we, we usually don't use that money, but you're smart to have it there. I just, I was curious.
Yes, yeah, we have, we, we, we haven't been replacing until they break. Which is helped us save some money in the.
At a girl, thank you. Yeah, I know, I know. We used to do that with our vehicles too. We've got those running on rubber bands.
That is true.
We'll move, move on to, um, wastewater capital. And this one we can hold off because it's just based on the capital project and, uh, the depreciation, this estimated depreciation on there.
Is that page three fifty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll hold off on that one. And so now we're looking at the water fund. Um, again, it's similar to the, the wastewater, uh, fund where the majority is due to the employees, uh, the co- cost of living adjustment. Um, adjusted down the insurance payment. The maintenance and repair went up and I know Rose wants to explain that. Um, I know that has to do with, uh, more repairs being done at the water plant.
Right, that's water plants and service lines, et cetera, throughout town. Uh, we try to be conservative in budgeting a, a, a lower amount, the fifty thousand. And again, that's reactionary, so when they break, we fix. Um, and you'll see at the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year to date is already at seventy-one thousand. So we thought be, increase the budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, our lines are not getting any younger, so we just anticipate continued increase for repair maintenance.
Uh, are we on still, still on page three five nine?
Um, no, three six three.
Okay, can, can we back up to three five nine? I just noticed something here.
Uh, yes.
Uh, I had a question about.
Okay, go ahead.
On capital, it says operating and maintenance, uh, maybe I missed that part of the conversation. That in seventeen eighteen was five hundred bucks, basically nineteen, seven hundred. And then we're going to six forty-seven, one seventy-two, four eighty-six and five eighty-six. Maybe Rose can answer that question. Was, was that a reserve, you said, or I mi- I might have missed that?
No, so this, this, um, fund was created in fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen to keep check all the capital projects. Um, so that first year, there's nothing there just because of the nature of accounting. So it's kind of a strange in governmental accounting. There's like two to three different accounting methods all in one. The wastewater and water funds are enterprise fund, which is full accrual accounting. So we show a budget amount, but when the actuals come out, it's actually not an expenditure, it's capitalized. And then, so we record the depreciation.
You're talking about operating and maintenance.
Mm-hmm, it's, that's the category that it's in. We don't have a capital or transfer out category. But that's, that's why you see that's increases. And for, for budgeting, we show it because it, it actually shows what we're spending rather than showing zero.
Right, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and so we'll back to page three hundred and sixty-three. Um, so line item six nine one hundred, transfer to other funds. That's transfers to the water capital for the capital improvement project. So we can hold off and explain that one. And then.
Chanel, I'm trying, I, Chanel, one quick one. I know it's, uh, it's really petty and I, and I get it. Uh, membership and publication in almost every department. We've started with, uh, like nineteen sixty-five, it's on page three six three. And it's line six oh six fifty, membership and publication. Uh, in twenty seventeen eighteen, it was nineteen sixty-five. Uh, the actual eighteen nineteen was eleven sixty. We adopted for nineteen twenty, uh, three thousand and we think it's gonna end up at eleven twenty-two. Why are we doing three thousand for twenty twenty-one when it's running less than two thousand every year? And I noticed every department's publications and, and membership and publication went up. It's petty, it's just petty stuff, but.
Yeah, Rose can answer that question. It actually has to do with the staffing, so I'll let her, so go ahead and answer.
So that is taxpayer dollars.
So with our current staff.
Does it have anything to do with training? Could it be training?
No, training's in a separate section. With our current staff, they are, um, they want to have memberships and participate, um, in, with other agencies uh, for like QIA, that's California Water Environmental Association and do more interaction like that, which we encourage because that can, that adds to their, their training and their growth. So they are taking advantage.
No, no, I, and I, and I, I'm with you on that. I think it's important that they, that they talk to other uh, members, other agencies that are in the same thing. I'm just curious, cause it's like almost double. And I, I, my guess is that they've always been members and, and active in these groups in the past. So I just, it's, it's like, it's every department, planning and, and enterprise funds and every department, the membership publication is up. I just, I, it's just a cur- just curious.
Madam Mayor, I can, I can help with that. Um, some of this is, some of this is gonna go back to, i- if, if we go back to page two ninety-seven, which is the city manager's um, uh, objectives. We look at, 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 um, objective number, or letter F is, is to wa- uh, maintain a well-trained and competent workforce to deliver city services. One of the things that I've been encouraging all of our department heads to do is to really start to push professional development amongst our staff. To, to, uh, encourage our staff to be active in the professional organizations, to encourage our staff to advance their certifications. Um, to, to become, uh, competent, not simply at the job that they're doing right now but to understand some of the things that other departments and, and other, um, even what other agencies are doing out there. To get a broader view of.
Cross-training.
Yeah, cross-training, exactly. This, this, um, over several years. over several years will start to bear fruit for the city, not only in terms of having a staff that's more well-rounded and can can cover other aspects beyond just what their own duties are. But it's going to help in the long run in terms of of uh of retention of employees, because generally speaking, employees that have uh the support from their management to better themselves and and develop professionally are more likely to stay with an organization than those uh uh employees that are not. So this is the beginning stages, and and um you know, if if this isn't the right year for it, I understand, but this is one of those things that I've, since the day I got here, I've been encouraging our department heads to really push the professional development.
Okay, thank you. I just, it was, it was a jump, and I, yeah, I I, it's very minor.
Well, can I also be petty, Madam Mayor?
Sure. Please join the bus.
Well, I under- well, I understand your rationale, Scott, but can we you know, our actuals have actually always been, you know, much lower than what is budgeted for. Can we maybe round up to the next whole number, say like this nineteen sixty-five go two, this eleven sixty-five go two, and then add five hundred to that? I mean, that would save probably in all departments would save, you know, several thousand dollars in our budget.
We can do what, you know, wh- whatever the city council wants to go with this. My my direction or or request of the department heads was to give the employees the opportunity to engage in professional activity, professional development activity if they, if they chose, and to actually encourage them to do so. Uh some employees will take advantage of it, some will not, and at least initially. But um if their budget isn't, if the budget's not there for it, they won't be able to. So um i- if, as I said, if if this is not the right year for that type of an uh an increase, I understand, and we can, we can um have the budget reflect that, but that's that's the 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 philosophy behind it from my sta- from my standpoint.
Give me a ballpark, what do you think I would save?
Oh, uh if we cut it back, um ten thousand dollars maybe, if that, I, because I think what we're looking at is, I'd I'd have to go back and add it up throughout all the departments, but we're probably talking about a thousand or two from each department at most.
I mean, come on, really, Scott? Who'd want to leave Buellton?
That is a good question.
Uh 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 okay, I'll uh I'll I'll actually ask to leave that in there.
Okay, um the next one, we could adjust if needed. Um travel and training, if you look at the history and the requested, and then with COVID nineteen, I don't know if that's gonna be, no.
What line is that?
Uh the one right below it. If you are looking for saving.
Yeah, this falls right in with the same thing with memberships and publications, but I I think given the COVID nineteen situation, we're likely to see a a decrease in the in the availability of travel and training. Uh we're also seeing more uh virtual conferences, which tend to cost a whole lot less, and so those numbers will come out lower, at least until COVID nineteen uh situation subsides and we're back to somewhat normal operations.
So could we check? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I mean, that really, that travel and train, that budget line there is the actuals were fifteen oh three and one fifty-four, and they've been bumped up to twelve thousand.
That's correct.
If you look at all departments in that, that would be a substantial savings.
Right, when we did the budget, we did have plans originally for two of the water staff to go through SCADA training, which is five thousand apiece. So we had one class that was um scheduled for March, which that's obviously been canceled um and is waiting for um rescheduling, but that's one of the example reasons why the amount was that much.
And that's two employees?
I said that would be.
Right.
Okay, so maybe in the other departments, if they're willing to cut the uh travel training in half, um uh except for in the departments where something's already planned, that that could help. I mean
Well, it it looks like several thousand.
Well, Rose is saying Rose is saying she needs ten for the travel and training for two employees, so that one's already kind of set, but in the other departments, travel and training is up. You know, we were, we were gonna go to League of Cities. Uh I believe next month in Monterey, and that's gone virtual, so.
Right, so maybe, maybe you could take a look in all departments on that line, and maybe we can sharpen our pencil on that.
Including city, including city council.
Correct, because we're, we're not going anywhere this year.
We can definitely do, do some pencil sharpening here. Uh I'll make a distinction um as as Rose did here. The 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 two items that that she mentioned at five thousand apiece are really they're less, I mean, they are professional development, but they, they really um, there there are certifications that are critical for uh the operation of our facilities here. I think those are more um pressing than than some of our general conferences and such. So we'll go through the, and we'll, we'll sharpen our pencils. Uh we'll decide what uh what is, what is critical and what is less so, and we'll come back with some numbers that are a little tighter on that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that would be appreciated. Hey, anywhere we can save a dime, right?
Yes. Uh okay, so the next
Inflation is a corner.
One. Um so the next one that you can see that went up in miscellaneous, uh the merchant fees is, are recorded in that budget line item. And we have seen in the past couple months, a lot more credit card transactions, so our merchant fees have gone up. Okay, as well. And also, I've seen a current uh three sixty-three. And it's line item six hundred, nine hundred. Um and we've also seen, you're welcome, you've also seen that the new customers that have been coming into Buellton for water service, they've been setting up an online account and paying online, so definitely have seen an increase there, which is why our fees are going up. Um so we'll kind of be um reviewing those fees as well. And see if we can bring those costs down in the future.
Well, you're, you're smart to guess high and then come low, I guess. We just don't want to go too high.
Uh yeah, so I think the next highest one is again, those capital projects that we'll review.
Yeah.
So we'll skip over water capital, because it's the same as the sewer capital fund.
Uh huh.
And then we get into our special revenue funds. Uh no change in housing, that three thousand dollars.
Page?
Uh three seven three.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's uh the mobile home repairs for the senior center.
Yeah, that's nice to have. Have we used any this year?
No, not this year. They have not claimed any this year.
Okay.
Um next department, gas tax. Page, it starts at page three seventy-six.
Yeah.
Um there's no change to the rest of the operating, with the exception of the transfer to other funds. And we'll see that at the ca- in the capital improvement project.
Correct.
And then, if you keep rolling to page three eighty, that's the LTF fund.
Yeah, nothing, nothing there.
No, nothing there. Then page three three eighty-three, nothing there, transportation planning.
Yep, nothing there.
And then the last special revenue fund is Measure A, and you can see a huge jump in the transfer for capital.
Yeah. Now, this is, this is, this is not from general fund though, correct?
No, this is not general fund. They're all the special funds. Uh Measure A is funded through Measure A money, gas tax is through the highway users tax, SB one. LTF is the county, the TDA claim.
Correct. So that doesn't really affect, that does not affect our general funds?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Okay, so now we get
Three eighty-five, is that three eighty-five?
Yeah, starts at three eighty-five. So if we now go to page three ninety, that is the beginning of our capital budget, which is about seven point four million dollars right now.
Before we get there, Chanel, I want to compliment you on pages three eighty-eight and eighty-nine with a description of all the different category IDs. That was nice to throw in there. You're welcome. Thank you.
That's a keeper.
Uh you know, never had that before.
Plastic sleeve, that's right. Our, our appendix.
Okay, so now we get into the money.
So now, yeah, we now we get into the the big chunk of our budget. Um so this graph or this table is an overview of the capital improvement project. So in the allocation, it shows you um how much is from the general fund, gas tax, LTF, Measure A, water and sewer fund. Um for this particular table, what I gave, gave you is the current fiscal year, so two thousand nineteen twenty budget numbers. Any carryovers from the budget, gave you the original and what the revised with carryovers are. Um so you can see there that there were some projects that didn't happen, so they, they're getting bumped up to fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um so we'll go ahead and turn over to the next page, which is a five-year forecast of capital improvement projects. And if you don't have any questions there, we'll move on.
Uh just one for Rose. I I keep seeing project number three nineteen. That's a really high-ticket item. Which one is uh three nineteen?
Three nineteen is next fiscal year's road maintenance project, which includes McMurray Road all the way from the very south end to the very north end and Olive Industrial Way.
Ooh, a mile and a half.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just, I saw a lot of three nineteenth's.
Okay, and so the next section is just a summary of the budget. It's just in graph form, the different categories. Get through that. Okay, and then page three ninety-four, this is when we'll begin actually analyzing every capital project. And uh the first table shows you uh how much is allocated from each fund, so the capital, the general fund contributions five point three, and then if you could break down, um that's how much those funds are gonna contribute to each of the capital projects. So first project, uh one oh two, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Pause a moment. Um why is there no local transportation on twenty twenty-one?
Um there's, there's twenty, and in the graph?
It went from twenty thousand to twenty-three.
Uh
Oh, that's a good point. I don't see it.
Maybe that was a glitch, maybe that was a glitch on your, on your graph, but it's a look
Yeah.
On nineteen twenty, there was uh an indicator there, and then for twenty twenty-one, nothing.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
Just a glitch?
Yeah, it's probably a glitch in the graph.
Uh uh okay, no worries.
Right, thank you.
Five million.
See, we are, we are paying attention.
Yeah.
And you know your colors.
You're do- you're doing just fine, Chanel.
Okay, thank you. So um project one or two is storm drain and outfall. Um there was forty thousand allocation, so we're gonna keep the forty thousand, and I found a mistake when I was reviewing it. There's no forty thousand down below, so I'm gonna add the forty thousand. But you see it up in the proposed.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
So this is all rollover then? I mean, forty thousand carried over from this year's budget, the nineteen twenty budget?
No, this one's not a carryover. It's just the ongoing forty thousand for storm drain.
Okay.
And then project two oh one, uh there was nothing budgeted. We didn't budget anything. Um but it will be removed from fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty budget. Um and then the following, two oh seven, San Nesh River Trail.
I'm sorry. Chanel, can I go back for just a sec?
Yes.
I just, I need you to explain it, because I'm, I'm confused. Back on project one oh two, the storm drain, which I, I, it priority level is number one, it's critical, totally get that. But we have a forty thousand dollar allocation for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and a forty thousand proposed for twenty twenty-one. How do we get to a hundred and twenty thousand?
That should be from page three ninety-one.
On page three ninety-four. I'm sorry. Is it on three ninety-one as well?
Thirty-one on the five-year forecast. Uh so what it is, is the cost, the budgeted cost of that, that time period that you see from the start to end day. Um but I don't know if Rose can answer that question.
Doesn't make sense. It adds up to eighty.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at it. I don't know why it has that amount. Um unless it's including monies that were spent in prior years, we'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah, that's what it is. So page three ninety-one has a five-year forecast, and it says total budget, all years, actual, and prior.
That doesn't say for the storm drain.
I'll take a look and fix that on the final.
Because I come up with eighty thousand for, we, I don't see anything before nineteen twenty. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Anyway, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we, two oh one, there's nothing, so no change. Uh two oh seven, there's no change, we're keeping the fifty thousand for the San Nesh River Trail. And then the following page, two eleven. Um we completed village park, so there was no need for carryover, so there's zero. Uh city hall emergency generator for project two one four, we did not budget for that, but we did not acquire it this current fiscal year, so that's a rollover of forty thousand dollars. And then the next one, which is the biggest one, two hundred, uh project two fifteen, Avenue of Flags specific platinum implementation.
Yeah.
Um so the original had a hundred dollars for project management and inspection, nine hundred thousand for construction and improvements. Uh the total cost of construction was over, I think, one point eight million. Um the project is gonna be carried over from one year to the other, just uh the nature of the contract when it started. So what the two seventy reflects is carryover from the prior year in addition to a hundred and forty thousand dollars carryover from project. Find the number.
What page are you at?
Uh three hundred and ninety-seven.
Seven.
So project three fifteen, Avenue of Flags pedestrian drainage improvement is gonna be part of the Avenue of Flags um project. So that was added to the two fifteen. And then one thing to the one point seven for constructions, uh that, that's the base on estimate from the carryover. Um by the, by the time I bring this back next meeting, that number's gonna be a little lower uh because the construction company finally invoiced us for March, April. So that number may come down. So we, we may actually see that that part of that cost this fiscal year and not next.
Oh, good.
Okay. So the total, the total cost of the mediums, Chanel. Our total cost is two million fifty-seven, seven seventy-three, along with the hundred and forty for the drainage improvement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Total cost, or I'm sorry, the, the is it total budget all years? How we it went for, it, it says total funding is the two million fifty-seven, seven seventy-three, and then on, under that, total budget all years, two million one fifty-two, seven seventy-three?
That, that includes actuals for this current fiscal year.
Okay, and then we add in the hundred Okay, and then we add in the hundred and forty thousand for project three fifteen, the drainage improvement?
That's already included in that figure.
That's already included.
That's already included.
Okay.
What was the page you had before that, Holly?
Well, I'm looking at three thirty-seven with the project two fifteen, and it says total funding is the two million, the twenty twenty-one proposed is two million fifty-seven, seven seventy-three. And that includes that. So that includes the allocation from fiscal year nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, but it's a little bit less because I I I just, it doesn't add to me, it doesn't add up.
Um, I can um email you either tomorrow, the breakdown of current costs for that project, and that total, no, it's easier to see that way. Thank you, on what we've actually spent uh here today. Um, and then the next one, uh project two seventeen, Riverview Park Basketball Court resurfacing. That is a carryover, so it didn't happen this current fiscal year, so we're pushing that back to twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And then two eighteen, Riverview Park.
And if we don't do that, then it then the resurfacing gets more expensive, Dave.
Yeah.
I mean, it, yeah.
No, I was just laughing at the, I was just laughing at the invader.
I know.
It's the bedtime boy.
Yeah.
He was like, when are you done? Project two eighteen, um, we had budgeted twenty-five thousand for uh maintenance at the uh at Oak Park, but that can actually be done uh as part of the operating budget, so we went ahead and removed that from the capital budget.
We're still spending it, it's just not on the capital.
Yes, and it and uh Rose can give you more information on why that's possible.
Right, there's some CIP projects that we had listed um that we've removed and uh brought down to zero, so it has less impact on the general fund, uh because we have staff that is able to add those items to their current workload.
Rose has blessed you. Thank you.
Next project. Three oh six, phase three, Highway two forty-six, Second War Pedaling, uh the the proposed amount are rollovers um from the project. Uh, one thing to note, that the the total cost of this project will be reimbursed by a grant. Uh, so right now, we're spending the money out of general fund, and once the project is complete, we will submit for reimbursement, and we should be getting that money back.
And this is the ATF grant?
This is ATP grant.
Total amount back or part of the grant?
It is the total amount of the construction and project management and inspections.
This is the grant that M and S got us.
Right, this this project from design through construction and inspection is a hundred percent grant funded.
So it 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 should give us eight hundred and thirty-one thousand back into our general fund?
Um, not all of it, we already got seventy thousand dollars back for design from SB CAG.
Right.
Okay.
So about six hundred thousand.
Yeah, about six hundred seventy.
Wonderful, thank you, that's that'll help.
Okay, next one, uh project three oh seven. So we had originally budgeted six hundred thousand, and you can see the breakdown there was a hundred thousand in project management, five hundred construction. Um, and now the proposed allocates it uh for design and permitting, right-of-way acquisition, uh project management and inspections, construction and improvements, they the same, and this includes some rollover from the prior year as well, which is why there's an increase. Um, and this project is funded by the general fund and gas tax. Uh, the gas tax amount is from the S SB one um and the highway users tax. So any remaining is comes from the general fund.
Do we have two hundred and fifteen thousand in our gas tax?
Yes, we do.
We do, okay, um, and we we've been working on right-of-way acquisition for I don't since I've been on council, are we any closer to getting our right-of-way acquisition?
We're still working um with our attorneys and thrifties attorneys as well. I believe um there's been some more correspondence, we've met in the field. You know, thrifties giving a little bit of runaround because they're pushing off any decision-making until they can get with their subsidies. And there's a lot of things like that, that's still moving forward, um.
Okay, so this one's been going on, we and we can't do this project until we have the acquisition. So there's a very good, there's a good chance, I mean, I I that it won't go next year either.
There's a a good possibility of that.
Yes. What did you say, Rose?
Yeah, there's a good possibility that those expenditures will shift to the next fiscal year as well.
Yeah.
So Scott, where are we at with that?
I can probably help with that, Scott. Councilman, uh, when you go through the eminent domain process, there's a statutory statutorily required offer that's based on an appraisal that uh is in the process of being sent, if it hasn't already been sent this week. Uh, after that offer is sent, uh there's some negotiation, but the statutory offer is the last required step before a resolution of necessity can be brought to the council uh to find that an eminent domain case should proceed, so uh, we're negotiating, but we're also moving toward actually filing the eminent domain lawsuit uh if that require, if that's gonna be required.
Okay.
Always always hate to do that, would rather do it by negotiation and work things out, but if we have to, uh, we'll be bringing that to you within the next few months.
Is there resistance?
There's been resistance for twelve years, Dave.
Oh, yeah, easy.
Yeah, they don't wanna give up any of their land, even though we, anyway. Uh, is is the offer the hundred and fifty, or is the offer is, is it like negotiable, have we got?
The offer is based on an appraisal, I don't know what it is, I I have not asked uh my partner, who's the eminent domain attorney on this.
Got it, thank you, Gray.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is this, Chanel, is this total budget all years? Are are we looking at just the seventh, just the seven hundred? That's all, okay. Okay.
Yeah, and like Rose said, this may get pushed back one year. Um, so we can leave it there.
Yeah.
Counsel wants, um, pro- next project, three oh eight, North Avenue of Flax Park and Ride. There was nothing budgeted, uh it had a carryover, uh but based on actuals, there's only three thousand dollars left from the fifty thousand uh budgeted the prior year.
Big difference.
So next.
So we spent forty, we've spent forty thousand, forty seven thousand? With what, just the plans?
Uh, yes, design and permitting.
Design and permitting, okay.
Uh, project three eleven, Industrial Way Street Lights. So we had originally budgeted four hundred thousand, fifty thousand for project management, three hundred fifty thousand for construction. Uh, we had a carryover from the prior year, which is why you see that increase um sixty-seven thousand five hundred, that's the carryover for design and permitting. There.
Hey, could I ask Scott a question? Where are we at with that, or maybe that's Rose?
Well, the at at the the last direction we received from the city council was that this was going to be uh looked at as a solar project. Um, we are looking at that as a solar project right now, we're also looking at another alternative that may result in a significant portion of this project being paid for through uh another mechanism wherein the city uh has someone come in and build some solar panels for us, we're we're investigating an option for this to come in much sooner, or not sooner, excuse me, much much less expensive. But um I I don't, uh Rose, have we gone out, have we put out a a RFP or a?
No.
No, not not yet.
Not this time.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe on that?
I I don't, um, I haven't circled back to this.
Kind of put that not on the back burner, we kind of put a hold on it for a little while, so we can investigate this other option that would essentially pay for it for us, along with another uh potential capital project coming up here. So it's it's still on the uh on the drawing board, and we'll move forward with it as soon as we figure out which way um we'll go with it.
It's good to see that, it's it's good to see that we might be saving money, but I like to see that happen.
Absolutely.
Um, and just a quick question, PG&E, they came back and said that they've they spent like twenty-seven thousand of their time on this already, have we paid PG&E off on this one yet?
No, and the PG&E amount is actually more like fifty to sixty thousand. Uh, we have not paid for that, as far as they're concerned, the project is still on hold while we're investigating our alternatives.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next one, uh project three fourteen, Storm Drain Inlet Cap Base and retrofit. Um, this is currently, this was currently awarded on March twenty-six. I believe phase one is gonna be done fiscal year nineteen twenty, and then the second half is gonna start at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So a hundred and fifty this thousand this year and three hundred next year?
No, it should be.
Rose can clarify that.
Right.
A hundred and fifty two times.
Correct, Mr. Andrew Zeig.
Okay, so I g- okay. I a hundred and fifty two times, but you've changed the twenty twenty. Okay, so you've got an allocation of a hundred and fifty from twenty nineteen twenty, and you had an allocation of a hundred and fifty from twenty twenty-one, but your proposed is three hundred, and the budget total is four fifty, so how much are we spending this fiscal year?
This fiscal year, we're supposed to be spending a hundred and fifty thousand, or the most, the total of that amount. I think the budget reflects this right now, because we haven't received an invoice for from the contractor. So if the contractor decides, you know, his work is done or whatever, and he's delayed invoicing us until July first, that's why that the twenty twenty-one proposed shows that, because this fiscal year's budget would have to roll over into next fiscal year. They're two separate projects.
Down to one fifty.
But the total amount that we're, the total amount we're spending is four hundred and fifty thousand though, correct?
Uh, that's ongoing, that's just all years, which means pri- anything spent for that project number. Um, let me look at that, three fourteen.
The total budget all years line item in this detail, I think is supposed to reflect how much we've spent in total for a particular project, to kind of keep track of the bigger picture. I think it gets a little muddled for some of these projects, which the it's the same project title and same type of work, but each year has a different pocket, so each year has its own project, and it shows a larger amount because it's over all the years incorporated.
So we've we've already spent a hundred and fifty thousand on this.
Um, yeah, and if you look at the five-year, it looks like it's uh starts, it started in uh fiscal year two thousand sixteen. So some of that could have happened prior.
Well, I see where Holly's coming, I see where Holly's coming from, that's six hundred K.
But it
You're one fifty, a one fifty and a three hundred, that's six hundred K instead of that four fifty.
And I'll look into that, but yeah, like Rose was saying, that number reflects prior year's expenditures as well.
But your total budget all year says four fifty.
Oh, that's right, I see what you're saying now.
See, it's one fifty, one fifty and three hundred, six R K.
Okay, we will fix that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next one. So three fifteen, um, that had carryover, that's zero, because that was added to the um Avenue of Flax Medium Two project. And we can skip over through seventeen, uh that project was completed. So project three eighteen, Road Maintenance Project two thousand nineteen twenty. Um, there was nothing originally budgeted, but it was all it was all rolled over to fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
So none of the funds were spent?
Uh, ten thousand, ten thousand dollars it was, if you look at design and permitting, about five thousand and project management.
I do now, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And then so the the biggest increase for road maintenance is on the twenty twenty twenty-one budget. Originally, the total cost was four seventy-five thousand, and now we have a proposed cost of two million. The gas tax and measure eight, those aren't set, because the measure A contribution comes from the measure A funds, the gas tax from comes from gas tax. So whatever's remaining for that project to happen is gonna come from the general fund, which is about one point four million.
I guess my question is, how did we go from a plan of four hundred and seventy-five thousand up to two million?
Because when I do the forecasting initially, um for the road maintenance project to have a placeholder there, that's just a ballpark estimate based on the past, haven't done any evaluation yet on the actual nature of the repairs that's gonna be required for that work until the year prior, when we do more detailed investigation. So that's the reason why there's a a jump that much for it.
So from your from your guesstimate of four seventy-five, it's actually with the conditions of the road, it's actually two million?
Yes, that's correct, and if you notice, um, and if you wanna flip back to page three ninety-one, where we have the five-year forecast, we're trying to put placeholders because we know those projects are going to occur for our road maintenance, but they're just placeholder numbers in there, you know, based on just general estimates, but not on any actual investigation of what the actual repair work will need to be required.
That's a big jump, Rose.
Yep, yes it is, yes it is.
Look into that and maybe sharpen up pencils on that number too.
Well, we're still looking at different options, that's kind of a hopefully, hopefully it's just a worst-case scenario. We're looking at different methods for repair work uh at on different portions of the road to try to make it less um of an impact cost-wise. Uh, and right now, you know, the investigation work's still ongoing, but at the preliminary onset, we're looking at a large number, and if you've driven down McMurray Road and Industrial Way, um, you can see the condition is really poor, and we've tried to
Well, that's.
push off that maintenance for a while, because of all the construction that's been going on adjacent to those roads.
We should have, that it just seems like we should have had a more accurate guesstimate. Um, the other the other positive note to this, I'm always looking for a positive, is that the end date is fourth quarter in twenty twenty-three. So we're not looking at two million right out of the gate on this, is that correct, or?
Rose, you wanna answer that?
I'm trying, I'm taking a look at that.
Well, cuz I see what Holly's saying as well, you were going. Well, because I see what Holly's saying as well, you're going, we're going from a hundred and fifty K in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two of one point four million dollars.
Right, and, and usually with the nature of the projects, it's not going to be spent all the construction, especially in that one year period. Usually we start design in the fall, spring of the fiscal year and the construction ends up in the late spring, early summer. So that straddles between two fiscal year periods. So like.
Well, you've got a start date of first quarter twenty twenty and an end date of fourth quarter twenty twenty three.
Well, then we'll have to look at that because I have not been looking at the start and end dates of those.
And this is general fund money. I mean, we're, we're talking one year, one fifty and the next year, like I said, one point four million dollars. That's a significant jump.
Yeah, and I don't think. Yeah, we'll have to look closer at that number.
I had stepped out of the room. I missed.
Four oh two.
Four oh two and it's funding source allocation number zero zero one, general fund, which went one fifty to one point four million.
Whoa, okay.
I think we ought to take a look at it at least, right, Rose, and say, hey, you know.
No, that's what she's saying. She's saying that when, she's saying when this was proposed, the guesstimate was that it was going to run four hundred and seventy five thousand and then when they got closer to the project and they started doing, uh, looking at the road, that's when it jumped up from four seventy five up to two million.
Right.
But in, in that way, we were digging it up every night when McMurray. Is that the one we're talking about?
Part of, part of it. She's talking about the entire stretch of McMurray.
Correct.
And industrial way. From start to finish on McMurray and industrial. So it's a, it's a nice, long piece of road. Totally get that, but the jump from four seventy five to two million is, is tough to stomach. And I just, if the end date is three year, if it's a three year project, then two million's a little easier to handle, but it sounds like that might have been a typo.
I think that's a typo because that's not, it's not a three year project. Our road maintenance projects are typically one, one and a half.
Yeah, well, we can take a look at this and we'll clarify with Rose.
Right.
On the end date. Next one. Is project four oh one. Uh, we had originally budgeted fifty thousand and now we're removing it because this is another one of those that can be done through our operating budget. Oh, wait, no, this is the wrong one. This, this was a typo.
This, the four oh one is the fifty thousand you spend every year to improve your park.
Right.
And we're going to use part of this money for the bicycle pump track. We did not, we set aside fifty thousand for this year and we're probably only going to be using the fifteen thousand, it looks like. And then we're setting aside fifty thousand for next year and we don't have any, any, I mean, there's possible electric charge station, possible bocce court, possible pickleball, although the pickleball could be tied into the what basketball court.
Correct.
Repainting. So that fifty thousand, the hundred thousand that we're looking at doesn't necessarily mean a hundred thousand.
No, no.
Correct?
Yeah, correct. It's just fifty thousand was allocated for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty and twenty 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 one.
And we've only allocated fifteen thousand for the pump track so far.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm going to add the fifty thousand on that one.
And, and, and Holly, if we can get clarification, right now we have fifty thousand shown at each fiscal year? And the question is, were you looking for a total of a hundred thousand and it just happens to be split up over fiscal, the two fiscal years or?
I was, I was hoping to put, well, I, whether, it's, it's really up to council about a carryover. I thought if we did fifty thousand a year for improvements, you know, I, I've had people, they want a little splash park for the kids. They want bocce courts, they want pickleball courts, they want a electric charge. Um, I figured if we put fifty thousand a year into this, then we'd have enough money to do it, but it's really not being utilized right now.
So it's fifty thousand each year. So no, so let's say if only ten thousand is used this year, there will be no carryover of the remaining into next year to make it ninety thousand. It'll just be fifty thousand each year.
I mean, I, I would love the carryover, but I'm, right now I'm trying to figure out how to, how to save,
Right.
you know, two to five million dollars for the city.
Okay.
So if, if thirty five thousand helps, then thirty five thousand helps.
Okay.
Well, why don't we make that an individual item instead of just a, a fifty thousand projected budget? I mean, if we need improvements in the park, just bring it back to us.
Well, that's kind of what we did, Dave. We put fifty thousand into it and, and if projects come up that, that the council agrees with, that's why we all agreed on the pump track. It comes to council, council says, great idea, let's do it. Um, then, then the money is there to do it. It's, it's not that we have to spend fifty thousand dollars, but just that we allocate money so that if something does come up, you know, we've got, we've got some
Something in the budget.
The, the painting of the basketball court, somebody, some group wants a pickleball court down there. And as long as we're painting the basketball court, it's not going to cost anything more to paint it with pickleball markings too. So. But no, the council, council. Thank you.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So you want to put the fif, just the fifty thousand?
I, you know, we, we, if, if anything comes to council before the end of the year that we can use the remaining thirty five thousand for, and the council wants to do it, terrific. Otherwise, I, I'd say we just carry, we just.
Gets put back in the general.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next one.
Not what I wanted, but you know, that's, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next one. Uh, six oh three, Water Treatment Plant Facilities Improvement. Uh, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand. We're going to keep that number a hundred and fifty thousand. And then next page.
Okay, so Chanel, just real quick, when you, when you add up all these numbers, you're adding the hundred and fifty on this one and, and you're not adding the budget for all years at the one million, one twenty five, eight fifty one, correct?
Yeah, correct.
It's just a hundred and fifty.
Yes, it's just a hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then next one, six oh seven, Water Meter Upgrades, no change there. We budgeted a hundred thousand and then we're just keeping it at a hundred thousand.
While we're on this subject, we're, we're intending on changing these all over to electronic read, correct? Is that still in the works?
We've been currently doing that. Every meter that breaks, we're replacing it with the new meters. Um, all the new development projects, all the meters that are installed are all the new meters. Um, this budget line item here would start facilitating replacements of like entire neighborhoods. So like this fiscal year's allocation, we're working on the Ranch de Maria neighborhood.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then we'll move to project six oh eight. Nothing was budgeted there and there's no carryover. The project was completed or is expected to be completed this fiscal year. Project six oh nine.
That one, we're spending two hundred thousand on this fiscal year, correct? Six oh eight?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, six oh nine, uh, supplemental well waste or water treatment facility. We budgeted fifty thousand, but the original fifty thousand for conceptual plant and feasibility, this didn't happen. So we're actually pushing the whole project one year. So the fifty thousand proposed is for conceptual plant and feasibility rather than design and permitting. And the next one, Project six hundred ten, Water Distribution System Improvements. Uh, that's not changing.
Just one quick one back on six oh nine. The conceptual plan feasibility, the description says review of potential groundwater well sites and water treatment plant facilities as capacity for existing facilities is being reached. Our purchase of that property is not going to affect the cost on this project?
No, should not.
Okay.
Okay, so back to six ten, no change there. We budgeted a hundred thousand for construction and improvements. Other water distribution system, so that's staying the same. And then the next project, seven oh four, it's sewer line replacement. We had originally budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for construction. We're now proposing two hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar increase. Or there was a carryovers from the prior year. So construction is now two hundred thousand, project management, five hundred thousand. And the next one, seven oh six, uh, water or the wastewater treatment plant facilities improvement, that we kept at the same at three hundred. And that's all the capital improvement budget. Um, so what we'll do is we'll go back and analyze that three nineteen and bring it back, add that fifty thousand for the review park miscellaneous improvements. Let me see if there's anything else that I'm missing.
On, on project seven oh four, page four oh six, the project management and, and construction and improvements, we allocated two hundred thousand for that in the nineteen twenty budget. We originally had a hundred and fifty thousand for this year's budget and now we're changing it to two hundred. Why are we doing that?
Uh, rollover. So the construction improvement would have been two hundred plus a hundred and fifty, but we've already expended some of that. So it's the hun, the proposed is the hundred fifty plus fifty thousand dollars carryover.
Okay, but a hundred fifty and fifty is two hundred. You've got the hundred and fifty changed to two hundred and you're carrying over the fifty thousand, right?
Yes.
What am I, what am I seeing wrong? So that doesn't add up. I mean, I, I guess my question is the, the hundred and fifty thousand that was the original construction improvement price is now two hundred. And then you've carried over the fifty, so that's two hundred and fifty. So it went from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty. I understand the fifty thousand dollar carryover, but how did we go from a hundred and fifty to two hundred on the construction improvements?
We'll take a, a closer look at that because usually we try to cap it at a hundred and fifty for that particular type of work.
Okay, because that's, I mean, that's fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And we'll take a look at that. I can't pull it up right now in Tyler, but we'll take a look at that.
Thanks Chanel.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
Might have been a high bid.
Well, I just, you know, we've got, we've got how much coming out of general fund for next year? That was the one million something? I'm losing it now.
The, the revenue loss?
No, we have a one point three four revenue loss with the COVID, which really isn't that because then we're losing in our sewer line and everything. I'm just looking at our general. With all these construction projects, we're taking, uh, it's, there's a five million and then a seven million dollar hit. Is that?
So, uh, the general fund portion of the capital improvements was five point two million overall on all funds. The capital project impact is seven point two million.
Seven point four two eight?
Yeah.
Yeah. How can we, how can we, uh, cut this thing back? I mean, they all look like they're important projects, but we've only got nine point seven mil in our reserves. And I'm really not prepared to, to spend seven point four two eight million out of that. Is there any way, any, any capital projects that can be pushed a year or two down the line? I know we have pushed it down the line and, and I'm hoping that our, our revenues are a lot better than projected for next year. But, uh, you know, I, I, hard to explain to our taxpayers how we, how we had nine million plus in our reserves and we're down to two.
Madam Mayor, let's take a look at that over the next couple of weeks here. Let's, uh, let myself and Rose and Chanel talk about that and we'll figure out where we can, where we can make some adjustments and with any luck, we'll come back to you with a, um, with a, a plan to reduce that hit to the budget this coming year and, and hopefully we'll see some more rapid improvement to our, our revenue source over the next year. But we'll, we'll see what we can make some changes.
That's a big hit for the general fund.
But I think when they open up the, 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 the sales stuff and once you get through the pandemic and all the other scare cat tactics, it's, the, the people are going to be out spending money and we're, and we're in a good time of the year. We're not heading into the ugly weather.
A lot of people don't, a lot of people don't have the money.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Holly on that, that, you know, we can maybe push some of this stuff and push it into the next year.
I, I mean, I, I hate kicking the can. I hate kicking the can and I didn't realize, you know, I've been on council a while and I, I had no idea that we'd been kicking some of this stuff for as long as we have, but, uh, it's just, I, I know our reserves are for rainy days and we've certainly hit a rainy day, but I mean, this is like a monsoon and, and I, I thought.
May want to just say we can swallow the, the pill. We got to look at it half of it. If you move, if you find a way to maneuver half of it down the road, that's better than just staring at that big number and can't do that, can't do that. We'll have to live with what we do get. We're, we're not, uh, we're not failing and we've still got the upside of the year coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, anyway, I, I appreciate, truly, truly.
If we don't get that generator, then we're not going to have any power. Absolutely.
Art, you wanted to say something vice mayor?
Well, no, I, I, I agree with what, uh, Ed was saying and, and, and what you're saying. I mean, there's some things that we can push down the road. I, I'm, I know there's things that you can't push down the road, but you don't conceivably know, when you're going to have a big leak and, or something happens to the water, you know, we, a generator goes down or a pump goes down and those always cost, they're big ticket items. And so, um, to me, those are the things that you use your rainy day fund because you, you, you got to keep your street lights, your streets paved and water going to people. So, uh, yep. Some of the other little things, I think we push back.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, uh, all the work and the time. I, I know it's a late night and Chanel's been working on this for a long time. Rose, I truly appreciate all your input on, I have never had a clearer vision of what these capital improvement projects are as I have, um, studying this. So I.
I've never seen three, I've never seen three staff members, I've never seen three employees all know exactly what item we were talking about. That you were all on, on the same page.
Yeah, truly, truly, truly appreciate that.
Progress.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks Chanel. Truly do appreciate it.
Big numbers, but it's as easy to, to read.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I try my best. I try.
Unfortunately, we have to read them, but you know, it's, it's easy to go through the tables and understand them and.
Appreciate that you didn't print, print it all in blood red.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Chanel, I appreciate all your hard work on that.
Any more, any more questions, anything? We've got, I, I need to open it up for any public. I don't think we have anybody at this late date, but, uh,
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Everybody's listening.
So any, any questions? So any, any questions, any comments, guys? Before we, we let them sharpen pencils and see if there's any miracles, any?
Just an abundance of thank yous.
Yeah, and I just think when they come back, they know, I, um, I think Scott and everybody, they all know we need to find out what's critical, what's important and what's wishful thinking.
A priority and B priority.
We will certainly do that. Um, and, and while tonight's information from Chanel is certainly sobering, let me throw a little positive spin on it. We're in better shape than probably most cities out there. Um, the fact that we have, uh, at this point, even an, even an anticipated surplus in revenue over expenditure for this fiscal year is something to be, there, there's something to be said for the diversity of our, our, our economy here and, and the good management that this city has seen over time. Um, the, the, the term rainy day fund was mentioned here. We are certainly in the middle of a rainy day. Uh, this is, this is the reason that, that, that surpluses and, or reserves exist. Um, how we deal with that and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it as best we can and, and give the council some options to take a look at. But I, I don't think we're in a position right now to be terribly too hard on ourselves uh, because we're in better shape than a lot of cities are out there right now. We don't have to look too far and find a couple that are a whole lot worse, so.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Not too far away, huh?
Correct.
Yeah, and, uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to personally thank Scott and Rose and Chanel for working on this. I'm sure it took a lot of hard work.
Oh, yeah. But they know right where it is. When you mention something, they know exactly what you're talking about.
You got, you guys make it just look so easy.
Fake it really well.
There you go. Alright.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving on.
Chanel, you gotta put that boy to bed now.
Oh, I know. He's been popping in like every five minutes.
So, on, on that note, before moving forward, um, I have the manager's report. Given the late hour though, let me perhaps suggest, there's nothing, I believe, terribly critical to discuss at closed session this evening. It was just an update. We can push that off for two weeks if the council would like and come back with, with information in two weeks on that. I'll conclude with the manager's report if that's fine with the mayor and then we can call it quits.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mayor's, manager's report.
I won't lose any.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I won't lose any sleep on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there direction to bring back the, uh, the, 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 the budget with a resolution to adopt after the pencils are sharpened here?
Please.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few items, uh, actually much longer than normal, but of course tonight's a much longer than normal meeting. So, um, let me start with our recreation department, just a quick update on this. The recreation department is planning, uh, to operate our summer camp program this year, assuming that, um, all the stars line up with regard to the, uh, authorization from the school district. Um, and then obviously there are, uh, logistical issues that have to be overcome. Uh, but the, the plan is to observe all required county and CDC guidelines for, um, health and safety concerns, uh, social distancing and sanitation procedures. Uh, but at this point, the, the recreation staff is confident that should we get all the thumbs up we need, we will be starting a summer camp possibly as early as June eighth, but we'll keep the city council posted. If the city council has any concerns or questions about that, please let me know right away. We'll, we'll, uh, address those as quickly as we can. Um, as the council's aware, we have been in a, a, a rather rapid stage of business reopening over the past week. Um, over the weekend, we had thirty-two businesses, um, register with the county to reopen. Um, and then in the last couple of days, we've had another, um, like number twelve, uh, fill out the paperwork as well. Most of those are going to be restaurants. Some of them are businesses which were already open, but still needed to go through the health department, um, um, process on that. Staff has been in discussion with a number of businesses to, um, provide some, uh, relief with regard to alternative configurations for how they operate their businesses. Uh, for instance, we've been in discussion with the Hitching Post who is looking at moving some of its seating outdoors underneath a tent and we are, uh, rapidly, uh, addressing that issue and they should be, uh, able to proceed here very quickly. Other businesses are, are approaching us as well and we're doing our best working with the fire department to process those as quickly as possible and get them open. We'll keep you posted on that. Um, next, I'm happy to let the council know that escrow on the Willamson property closed this morning. The city is now the owner of twenty-three plus acres of property formerly of the Willamsons. Um, we still have some work to do. There is some, um, pest control work that has to be done in the main house as the council's aware, the, uh, the sellers of the property continue to hold, uh, the barn and they're paying rent on the barn, uh, until they get their personal property, um, resolved there. And, uh, we'll, we'll keep the council apprised of what's happening, but that is a, as they say, a done deal at this point. Um, and lastly, um, we told the council at the last meeting that we would bring you back information regarding the replacement of the flag pole on median two. Um, we have, uh, we're in the process of receiving quotes. It turns out it's not as, as cut and dry as it needs to be. Uh, the work on the flag pole itself should be fairly inexpensive. Um, the, uh, there is some additional work that needs to be done though with regard to design of, uh, the, the footing and the base that that will sit on. We're in the process of, of, uh, receiving that quote right now. Hold on, I've got some real rough numbers for you, uh, that we'll continue to refine over the next couple of weeks here. But, oop, sorry, I missed a page. Just real generally, and I can get more specific if you'd like, uh, but we're looking at a, a potential range of somewhere in the neighborhood of between seventeen and twenty-three thousand dollars total for this project. The bulk of that is going to wind up being the designing construction of the base. The flag pole itself.
Yep, the foundation.
Yeah.
That's, you, I know it. It's like a tomb.
Is a really inexpensive proposition, even at prevailing wage, which is required. Um, there is a possibility it could come down much lower than that, but right now that range, the seventeen to twenty-three is our best guess. But we'll keep, keep you apprised of, of where we're at and certainly this will come back to the city council for approval prior to any expenditure. Yes, sir.
Part of that cost could make it hinge.
I'm sorry?
Part of that cost to make it hinge?
No, I believe that, that, the, the, given the design of the median, there's no hinge that, that would be proposed here. It would be a stationary, um, a fixed pole.
That's, that's the price of pouring concrete in the bolts?
It's the price of designing, um, the, the foundation and ensuring that it meets all today's codes, yes.
Wow.
It's big bolts.
Yep.
Gotta do it right.
Uh, son, I had a couple of.
Make sure they, make sure they pack to soil.
Yes.
About our opening up. Uh, I, I heard that, I heard that, uh, Pea Soup is open already, is that correct?
I, I'm not certain if they're open. They have, um, they have filed the paperwork with the county and received the certification to open. Uh, but I haven't seen any confirmation that they are open again.
And have you heard from Mother Hubbard's, Ellen's or any of the wineries? And Firestone, you said you were gonna reach out to.
I have not talked to Firestone yet. I have, I have seen Mother Hubbard's has, um, has filed their paperwork with the county. Uh, Gino's and Antonio's Pizza have both filed their papers, paperwork with the county. Uh, Pea Soup Anderson's, Figaro Mountain, uh, a, a, a number of our restaurants have. Uh, as far as wineries, I know there are at least a couple of wineries in Buellton along with Pence Winery just outside of Buellton that, that have filed their paperwork as well. Uh, we're currently working to ensure that we can get, uh, food service where it's required so that those wineries can operate their tasting rooms. And, and the city obviously isn't providing that. We're simply trying to remove obstacles where it's possible to make that happen, so.
Right. I'm just wondering if we should somehow contact Mother Hubbard's, Ellen's, uh, with Gino's and let them know that they, they do have the ability to get out on their sidewalk and parking lots. Mother, or Ellen's has that parking lot it could use.
Right. I, I will be paying all, I will be paying that whole row of businesses a visit here in the next couple of days, poking my head in and just letting them know if, if that's something they want to consider, we'll be happy to work with them on it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Scott, can you go to Firestone first?
I, I'd be happy to. I, it's a tough job, but somebody has to be there.
Oh, boy, it's a long night.
Yes.
Okay.
And with that, my report is complete.
Thank you. Any other questions for city manager?
No.
Oh man.
And the reason, and the reason we skimmed by your pages in the, uh, budget reporting, uh, was not because, uh, we, we, I was in a hurry to get past it. I just wanted you to know that we think very highly of you and, and the budget issues on it were just not, not important. So that, that's why we passed by city manager and city attorney Greg.
Well, thank you.
We just respect you both so much.
I never complain about not having my budget scrutinized. It, but thank you.
Alright, okay, and with that, with my broken gavel, I am, uh, adjourning our council meeting at, uh, ten fifty-seven. We'll see y'all again Thursday, June eleventh.
You should go four, four more minute, go four more minutes since, since the eleven o'clock hour.
No.
You're in your records.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you all. Yep. Bye.